All right. So, we have a hard stop at seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this joint session of the Menlo Park City Council and the Menlo-Atherton District Fire Board, Menlo Park Fire Board. We're gonna go ahead and, at this point, call the meeting to order. I just wanna say at the outset, we're very honored to have you all joining us here this evening. We very much appreciate what you do for our community and the service that the Fire District does for both Menlo Park, Atherton, and East Palo Alto. So, it's a pleasure to have you here with us. I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our council first and professional staff, and then pass the mic over to Virginia Board President Corrali. So, to my right, we have Mayor Proton Taylor. To her right, we have Councilmember Combs, Drew Combs. To his right, we have Councilmember Betsy Nash. And to her right, we have our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. And behind there is our City Attorney, Bill McClure. And then also, if people here wanna give any public comment, here to our right, we have our City Clerk, Judy Hearn. And if you could please fill out a card in the back and bring it to her, that would be great. And we'll have Board President Corrali.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller, and welcome. Thank you for welcoming us. On behalf of the Fire Board and the Fire District, I want to say thank you for hosting this meeting tonight. We're also looking forward to a productive meeting, and hopefully, we'll be able to highlight some shared priorities, so that we can move forward together in a collaborative manner. So, thank you very much for hosting us. We're honored to be here as well. So, to my left, the Fire Board's on here, is Vice President Robert Jones from East Palo Alto, Chuck Bernstein from Menlo Park, Jim McLaughlin from Atherton, and Rob Salano, longtime and very involved Menlo Park resident, and our Chief, Harold Chappelhoman.
Excellent. So, at this time, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, so we have five regular business items this evening, so the public knows, we're not gonna be voting on any items tonight. These are simply discussion topics between the two bodies. We're gonna go through each item and then take comment from each of the members of the body. And so, at this time, I'm actually gonna turn the mic over to Board President Corrali to go ahead and conduct the first item.
Okay, thank you, Ray. So, our first item is the emergency response standards, times, methodologies, and primary emergency routes for the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. And so, I know that Chief Chappelhoman prepared a report, so Harold, do you wanna take it from here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, councilmembers and directors, members of the audience, Harold Chappelhoman, Fire Chief. So, on this report, what I was trying to do, and you know, it's a great opportunity, it's the first time since I've been the chief for 12 years, and in the organization for 38 years, that I think we've had an opportunity to have a joint meeting. So, I very much appreciate that. There's a lot of reasons, I know, over the years, these didn't occur, but in other places where we've been able to do this, I think we've been successful in, you know, paving the road, at least for those of us working in the operations of the organization, to work more closely together. So, I look forward to doing that with Starla, with your Police Department. We already meet with the chief on a fairly regular basis, and have done so in the past, as well as the City Manager, so we're hoping to continue that. So, I tried to take this report, this is new, it's nothing that's ever been out before, and really distill for you, you know, the most important aspects of how we operate. A lot of times, you know, when you've been with the organization, as long as I have, and been doing this for a long time, I think we tend to speak in a language that people don't understand. And so, I tried to make this as understandable as possible for people that don't, obviously, know maybe, or understand how we operate, and why it is important, and why it's important to the community, and most importantly, why it's important to both groups, because it is important. We serve the same group of people. You know, if the community wins, both agencies win in that, because that's what we're trying to do, is better serve the community. So, this gives you an idea of how large the Fire District is. It also tells you in here, maybe you didn't know, I know I'm kind of a history buff, of why the city of Menlo Park actually extends into the bay. And part of that has to do with, you know, claiming land to the middle of the bay from years ago, back in the 50s, when there was concern about the expansion of the port of Redwood City, and parking boats out in the bay that would be used later on to be loaded and unloaded. It goes into what each area for each community covers. Obviously, the city of Menlo Park has areas out in the marshlands and the baywaters, as well as landmass, and it does that for every one of the areas that we protect. From there, it goes into the relationship with the fire station locations. And I think, most importantly, if you look at the Page Two and Three in there, you start to see that the stations are located in areas, and we try and use percentages to tell you what areas they actually protect. So, if we go to Station One on Page Two, it talks about the station, 64-years-old, built in 1955. It goes through a number of different things, including that it's our number-two facilities priority. It's currently used for training, testing, meeting, and supplies. It's the home of Engine One, Truck One, Battalion One. It provides automatic aid to Palo Alto for fire only, and then San Mateo County for fire and emergency medical services. But I think most important to the city is that 54% of Station One's response area is in Menlo Park, 34 is in Atherton, 34%, 3% is in East Palo Alto, and 9% is in the county area. So, the stations, while they serve, this station, while it serves Menlo Park, it's not the only thing that it serves. And so, the Fire District, because it does protect multiple communities, East Palo Alto, Atherton, County areas, and then on contract to SLAC, as it starts out with, it shows you that the stations geographically were located based upon what was the best location to serve all those different areas. And there's maps at the end that we'll go through in there. Station Two, equally, it talks about what areas it serves in Menlo Park, and the majority of what it serves in Menlo Park is the marshlands, the Bayfront, the end of University, the end of Cooley Landing, and of course, that water area that we discussed a minute ago, or talked about a minute ago. You can see Station Three, as we get there, we have 79% of Station Three's areas on Page Three is in Atherton, you know, 9% is in North Fair Oaks, or the county area, 11% is in the Sequoia Track. So, none of that station's area directly protects Menlo Park as its first in, but there's also a relationship, if we go multi-alarm or cover, from our different stations, of what all these stations do working together. Now, how that engine moves around is important, because it primarily comes down El Camino to come into Menlo Park. So, anything done, and we'll talk about the streets in a little bit, anything done to any of the major roadways impacts that engine's movement. So, whether that engine's going to a call then in Menlo Park, it's on a cover assignment, it's going somewhere else, the routes become important, and I'll get to that. Station Four is our oldest station, we're currently working on design to replace that. As you can see, it was opened in 1949, it's 70-years-old. It's the home of Engine Four, we have a cross-staff patrol unit up there, and 44% of that station's response area protects areas in Menlo Park. 37% is in Atherton, 5% are in Sequoia Track, 13% in West Menlo, and 1% in Stanford lands in the county area. You go down to Station Five, 21-years-old, and again, I'll just focus on Menlo Park. Now, 26% of that area protects Menlo Park, of that station's response area. If you go to Station Six, which is our newest station, and we'll be holding a grand opening later on this year for that, the station's open, but we haven't quite finished the whole complex, you can see that 71% of Station Six's area is in Menlo Park. And of course, that's your downtown fire station. What a lot of people don't realize, and I have our Fire Marshal here, is that only half of downtown Menlo Park is sprinkler buildings, and none of the parking areas behind the downtown businesses have water supply in them. So, all the water supply is on Santa Cruz Avenue, which, if we could ever redo that, we would love to see that happen. And finally, Station 77, which I know Director Corrali wants to deal with in the lightning round, it's at 1467 Chico. This is a station we don't own, we have a 55-year current lease with you on the station, but 100% of the station's area protects Menlo Park. It was put in, again, about 23-years ago, and what made it unique was, this was Engine One's coverage area off of 300 Middlefield coming down Willow. Today, you can imagine how bad that would be if we tried to service that area from Station One. We recently added to both Station Two and Station 77 additional resources. Some of the councilmembers were there for the dedication of those two units. We have a three-person engine company in this station, and we just added a two-person rescue squad, which is a smaller vehicle. What's a little bit different in how we operate with the rescue squad is, the rescue squad is in addition to, in some communities, they downsize their resources because of budget, and they end up with a smaller unit. That doesn't mean that's exactly better for the community. So, this is an additional unit down there to handle call volume in East, and also because this is a hard-to-serve area, simply because movement back and forth, again, as we get into the street network, is difficult because of the crossings across Highway One, and the traffic, and so forth. This is also the home of our water rescue operations, and our facilities, repair, our fleet services, our shop facility. We also have a rail link in there, and today, we had a meeting with the Dunbarton Rail folks, as you had a public meeting as well, and we had about 100 people in every one of those meetings that they had, and we discussed with them, you know, the station there, because it jumps into M2, it covers Bellhaven, and equally, we have a rail spur that works off of that. So, for response on the rail in the future, we would be able to service that from that station. This also provides, this station provides automatic aid, as does Station Two, to the city of Fremont, and it provides service to Dunbarton Bridge. Why is that important? In the county studies that were done not too long ago, they equated that half of the backups that occur at times are related to traffic accidents. So, the faster we can get to an accident, because the units are close enough, the quicker, hopefully, we can, you know, move the vehicles out of the way, treat the patients, and eventually clear the roadways with, obviously, the assistance of the California Highway Patrol. So, again, these are the seven stations that we have. As it goes in the next section, bottom of Page Four, it talks about the apparatus, and how we use engines, it's kind of our backbone, which carry water, and, you know, a lot of people see those units and think, wow, they're so big. But a third of that unit, a third of the size of that unit is the crew compartment. So, on a modern equipment that we have today, everybody is facing forward. We've actually taken, and I've seen us put air packs in the engines, so we can get them on real quick, but that's not the safest way to run around, especially if you get in a vehicle accident with that engine, because those become projectiles. So, we've now taken the axes and all the tools that we used to put inside the cabs, air packs included, they're back in the compartments for the safety of the crew. These are also areas of refuge, and can be during a wildland fire, if they're in a difficult situation, they can take refuge in the engine, and equally, there's airbag protection for the crews in these as well now. They actually put airbags into the inner cab, so we can have side-impact safety and so forth. So, the other two-thirds of the apparatus, don't forget, we have hose, a pump, a lot of different hose lines, and then all the equipment that we have on here, ladders and tools. So, it's a multifunctional platform. I almost don't like to call them fire engines, because people get the wrong idea, and they think, well, can't you make them smaller? You can, if you add to your fleet. I would not recommend downsizing, because like your plumber, if you have a plumbing problem, if you don't have the right tool, you're gonna be waiting longer, and meanwhile, maybe you got a lot of damage going on. So, we're kind of in that same business of, you know, mitigation, right? We don't wanna show up at a call at somebody's house and not have the right tool for the right job. So, from emergency medical services, to firefighting, to hazardous materials, to technical rescue, they carry components for all those things. And again, we have seven frontline engines, one in every single station that we have. We also have two ladder trucks. The most recent, obviously, was added to Station Two. That took us about, you know, about seven years to put that in place, and we're happy to have it. And then I know, in past days, when I've been to some of your meetings, I would hear, "Chief, can't we just narrow the road to nine feet? Do you guys really need 10 feet?" And the answer is, you can see, the mirrors on the larger engines, and even the truck, can be anywhere from nine foot six to 10 feet. So, you know, again, these are big pieces of equipment, they carry a lot of equipment, they carry people, because of that, you know, we try and make them as safe and as functional as possible. So, we do need the roadways to be 10 feet clear. In addition to, at the bottom, you can see, again, I mentioned water rescue, all the different types of watercraft that we have at our Station 77, and that's on Page Five. And again, it goes back to the areas of the bay that are in Menlo Park, and we regularly go out there on different types of people in distress. We work with the United States Coast Guard, we work with Redwood City, which has deeper watercraft. We have launch points at the Dunbarton Bridge, we have launch points at Cooley Landing, and we have a launch point, not necessarily specifically designated for that, but out at the Marsh Road, the old dump that's out there, and out of the park. So, first response, on Page Six, you know, and the communities we serve. So, time is critical in our job, you know, minutes matter, and seconds count, obviously, quite a bit. And so, roadways, location, configuration of apparatus, and what it's able to do, as well as having, you know, a fleet with every unit, having a paramedic is vitally important for the district. The district does not get paid full freight by the county for all the paramedic equipment and services that it provides. We certainly don't get paid for all of our paramedics, so the district has added these members and added these resources based upon what makes sense for the community. We don't have to do that, but we do, because it's the right thing to do. So, if you go down a little further in here, it talks about, a little bit about that, it talks about tiered response with law enforcement. Obviously, many of the police officers have a lower level of training when it comes to emergency medical services, they're not paramedics, but that's okay, they can go in, stabilize the scene for us, secure the scene, make sure that, you know, if they're there first, we know what we're getting ourselves into, and help us with any people that are, you know, maybe upset, or what have you. So, they work as part of a team. Next phase, the paramedic comes in. Again, you can have a single-unit law enforcement arrive on scene typically first, then we have a three-to-four-person crew come in behind it, and they'll treat the patient with the paramedic typically in the lead. After that, then we have a contract in this county with American Medical Response, and the ambulance shows up. But the point is, from a fire-first response standpoint, it's patient stabilization, especially on trauma calls and any type of life-threatening emergency. If you look to the 2018 statistics that we've given you for 8,743 emergencies, not all in Menlo Park, but certainly important, we strive to have a 90 percentile success rate, meaning we're there, you know, 90% of the time within seven minutes, and all units on scene within 11 minutes, if we have a multi-unit type of call, like a fire or a car accident. And you can see, we're able to achieve, you know, that 94.67% of the time, so above the average, within 11 minutes. So, 95.59 last year in 2018 for seven minutes, and 94.67% of the time with 11 minutes, all units on scene. Now, numbers are great, but in the end, those anomalies are all, obviously, people that didn't get service in a timely fashion. So, when did those occur? Where do they occur? And that's what we're constantly looking at. And numbers don't tell the story either, that really, the most important aspect of this, besides the station locations and the unit availability, and a constant choreographed movement to cover, if we have gaps in our system, because we're always doing move and cover, including with our neighbors, and automatic aid, is the people that we have. You know, our folks, like the law enforcement members, like the paramedics on the ambulances for the private ambulance company, take this very seriously, because lives are at stake. So, you know, I give our members the credit, the men and the women who work for us in the firehouses, they're the ones that achieve these timeframes. And when I say that, you know, there's a part of that which, you know, as we talk about the roadways, that I think I just need to say to you, and again, we're gonna get to that in a second. So, again, I give our men and women all the credit, and the fire stations, the first responders, of which we have just about 100, the credit for being there within these response times. And they go to great lengths to be, again, in a coverage system where in the middle of the night, you could end up literally walking out to the fire truck and getting canceled on move and cover, or driving to the end of the street and getting a cancel on move and cover, but you move, so that we keep and maintain those response times. And as I talk about that next paragraph in there, which it talks about traffic control devices and so forth, that limit, prohibit, revise, and properly select these devices, you know, at the very bottom there, that page, on Page Six, it says, "Almost every document I've found or read does not address these basic public safety considerations and priorities which are needed to balance transportation decisions, methodologies, and also needed to and intended to protect the public and use for the common good." So, what's the common good? Common good is, there's certain ways that we need to move around this community, because we don't just protect Menlo Park. We protect Atherton, we protect East Palo Alto, we respond into Portola Valley, Woodside, on the Highway 280, Highway 101, the Dunbarton Bridge, we go to Fremont, we go to Palo Alto, we go to Redwood City. So, there is this symbiotic relationship with the roadways that isn't just about the communities that we serve, but I've narrowed the streets in this next section down to the ones that apply to Menlo Park for discussion purposes. What is it that slows us down? Speed bumps, humps, lumps, chicanes, rounds, all those different things slow the equipment to a call. So, one of the things that, again, I'll introduce here in a moment, is, is there ways, and this is, you know, again, part of that discussion, I think, that you can have, is there ways that we can better work together to solve some of these problems in terms of equity amongst neighborhoods, equity amongst communities? And I believe there are ways to do that, and I'll cover that at the very end. So, in summary, in order to save life and property, before we get to the road network, which is the last portion, and protect the environment, emergency response routes and times are critical to the operations and service of the whole community by the Fire District. So, just reiterating what I just said. So, the next section gets into critical emergency response routes. If you read it on Page Seven, it talks about that 42 are roadways are in or pass through the city of Menlo Park, and again, those connect to other communities. You can see down below, if it was printed in color, in red or parentheses, it talks about routes between different jurisdictions, two places like Kaiser Hospital in Redwood City, two places like Stanford's Trauma Center in Palo Alto. You know, that's all part of a relationship that we have that needs to work for the sake of the community, especially when people are sick, injured, and they need to be taken Code Three or transported to the hospital. Or we need to get assistance in from other communities on move and cover during fires or high-call volume, or whatever you have there. So, you can see those first 14, you know, some of those are actually in your control, some of those are not, because they belong to the state, some of those travel through other communities. But again, whether we're widening, narrowing, adding more traffic signals, and having some of the discussions, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of times, the Fire District has not been included in some of those discussions. And so, you know, when we have a maybe negative reaction, or not a positive reaction, it's because we see how that relationship works with us and the different communities and people that we serve, and it can have a negative effect, obviously. So, the first 14 are significant, obviously, for us, the next five are critical, the next five are significant, and I've only downgraded that because they protect different areas in the Fire District. So, Bay Road is an example, and there are number 15 on this list, is between, runs between Marsh Road and Willow Road. Engine Five, which is in District Five, and Engine One cover both sides of that. And maybe one is unavailable, and the other one has to go, or both are unavailable, and something's gonna have to come from somewhere else in the district. So, typically, here, you have two different areas within the Fire District, not necessarily getting critical, they're not crossing a freeway, they're not crossing a railroad track, or anything like that. And then finally, important, these last, I think it is 24, I believe it said in there, are just streets that, again, we respond down through the Fire District. And when you end up with 42 roadways, and you look at some, again, are larger roadways within the district, you really end up with a very small list in the city of Menlo Park. So, you know, we're not, sometimes I think it was construed, though, the Fire District wants every roadway to be a primary route. Well, that's not true, but we see routes that we need to use, that obviously, our first priority would be they have no-traffic type of mitigation that would slow us. We have ways through traffic preemption, which, what is traffic preemption? Traffic preemption is devices on our fire trucks that signal the traffic signal, turn it green before we get there. We just upgraded all of our system to basically a GPS system, used to be infrared. So, now that's ahead of us, we can change the signal. Now, on some streets, that doesn't work so well on Willow, when there's nowhere for people to go, right? Because it's just gridlocked. But at other times of the day, it does work well. And so, we've almost got the entire community, almost got every signal now that has that capability. So, that does speed us up, that does help us. Stop signs, same thing, not as big a deal for us, because we can slow, the driver's gonna look both ways. What really makes it difficult is the design of the rounds, the bulbouts, the chicanes, the tables, the bumps, the humps, the lumps, all those things can become problematic. But, and as our Fire Marshal knows, and we've had some success recently, when you just installed the speed bumps, or Marmona and McKendry, you put cutouts in those. So, if you don't see a cutout in a speed bump or a table, that means that that was installed, essentially, without our blessing, that we didn't have involvement in that. And pretty much everything in Bellhaven is that way. And so, you know, looking at what can be done to improve, you know, operations or response with the district is, to go back on these routes where those exist and modify those. And maybe part of that discussion can be a shared project with the district and the city to modify them or put new ones in, and who knows? Is there a shared cost capability in that? I don't know, I'll let the directors discuss that with you. But there are improvements that can be made. You know, we recently, you know, John, our Fire Marshal, talked to me today about Chico. Chico is a big street for us, because we have an engine company, 100% of its area protects Menlo Park, right? Make a left, you're in M2, make a right, you're in Bellhaven. So, it's in a good location. What most people would never know about that street is that when the school remodeled up the street, where did it put its bus loading? On Chico. Right in the response route, because nobody ever asked us. It used to be in the front of the school, where the buses would pick the kids up. Now, that's teacher parking. Where's the playground? On the Chico side. That means there's more traffic there, there's more people. So, all those things inadvertently slow the fire truck, because the firefighters can't go through there at a speed, you know, which it would be safe, right? They gotta slow down to do that. As you put in the buffered bike lane on Chico, which was good for Facebook and anybody riding a bicycle, the curb is 10 inches high, the fire truck can't get over that. On the other side, when traffic backs up into Bellhaven coming from Bayfront, as you know, there's only so much room. So, imagine gridlocked traffic coming up the terminal from Bayfront, and then somebody going the other direction, how do they get out of the way of the fire? They can't pull to the right, that's what the DMV says you gotta do, but there's nowhere to pull. And they can't go left, because they got a long road of traffic there. So, John knows what we're trying to solve right now, and thank goodness Nikki's back, is some of these issues, how do we then take that roadway and modify it, if you wanna put curbs and sidewalks in, so that it's conducive for that fire truck, right? And, you know, crosswalks and corners and other things, you know, narrowed areas where the fire truck has a hard time navigating through some of those narrowed road areas from curb to curb, in that corner on Chico where the power line is, and on the right is a bike path and a pedestrian path on the Facebook campus side, you know, again, those are all things that slow the equipment. are all things that slow the equipment. Let me go back to the speed bumps. So, you know, Bellhaven isn't the only place that exists. I mean, again, if you don't see the cutouts, that's throughout Menlo Park, but not everywhere, because in recent years, we have been working well together on these things and have a standard. But as it said in here, and I don't want to, you know, misadvise you, that does cause damage to the fire truck. Now, I would love for our firefighters to slow down for every speed bump, hump, lump, everything that they got to deal with. But the fact of the matter is, put yourself in their position. You hear, "We got to work and fire," they're not slowing down. You hear, "You have an infant or a child not breathing," they're not slowing down. So, you know, again, having those cutouts, something that simple keeps the forward progression of the fire truck, so that we don't damage the equipment, and we get them there as quickly as possible. It's a little thing. And then narrowing these streets down to what are the primary routes, ideally, we discuss, could the city adopt some sort of policy? I don't know, and that would be great. But, you know, the goal for us is time counts. And nobody's ever really said, "Wow, we're so impressed that you showed up so fast." And we do, right? You see the percentages. But when you're the person waiting for help, it seems like a long time. And I know, right? I mean, I'm not only the fire chief, I'm a customer. It's like that bad hair growth commercial, right? I not only own the company, but I'm a customer. So, you know, I know what it looks like to be on a gurney, going in an ambulance, and you have these bumps as well, and you got a broken neck, okay? And they're worried about the outcome. So, you know, again, these things matter. I absolutely understand the public purpose, to slow traffic, you know, we're all inundated, we all know how bad it is. And we're not trying to make it worse, we're trying to navigate through different agendas and priorities, but for the benefit of the public and all the communities that we protect, including areas outside of the community that we respond to, because they come in here too, right? So, at the end of the day, again, where do I see there could be collaboration? The speed bumps, humps, lumps, the cutouts, the prioritization of these routes in Menlo Park, especially when you see how it affects everybody else. And then, you know, again, that understanding that time matters, because it does. So, that's my presentation.
Just at the outset, Chief, a really thorough presentation.
Thank you.
And the document is really important, it's going to serve as something that we can go back to time and time again, as I think, I'm sure your board members know, or council members know, there are some documents you keep from meetings, and you go back to, and this is one of them. I want to go ahead and open it up to my council members, if they have any questions. And if not, I can summarize where I think we go with it. Any questions? So, I think what I would just say at the outset is, this issue I know is near and dear to the city's heart, it's definitely near and dear to mine. I have a child who, I don't know if you guys know this, but I actually have a child who the district has come to my house on multiple occasions, because they have a terrible nosebleed problem, and we have been, we at times can't get it stopped. And so, the response time has mattered to us. What I would suggest, actually, and I can't imagine, just when you said the six percent, those six percent, like, I a hundred percent agree with you, you work, we work, we must work as hard as we can, so that those six percent aren't there. So, what I'd suggest on this item is that we have our council liaisons actually work with the fire board liaisons and staff, and figure out something that we could look at jointly, in terms of going back and retrofitting areas to address response time. I think that's a great first project for us to do jointly together, and see if we can knock that number down. And of course, obviously, looking prospectively into the future, that's obviously something we look at in planning, but the idea that we can go back and look at areas where there are pain points and address them together jointly, I think, is something that's in everybody's interest. Any other comments? No? Okay.
Can I open it up to the fire board members, if they have any comments as well? I think, Harold, you brought up some really great points, and so, thank you for a very thorough presentation.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add is at the very back are the maps that are in there. So, it shows the primary response routes for, you know, and again, it shows you that symbiotic relationship in the whole district, and then it shows you by percentage, again, just to Menlo Park, what areas are covered by what station, and percentage in a map configuration, and then it shows you the entire district. And that entire area that you see in the bay and the baylands is Menlo Park. So, as most of you know, that covers out to the tip of East Palo Alto, including down at the Inacoole Atlantic, so.
I'll just, I just want to say I agree with you about this as a possible first collaboration project. So, thanks for bringing that up, and I know that these primary response routes are concerns for our fire board and our chief, obviously, mainly just to ensure that we have access so that we can timely, we may get to an emergency.
The next item that we're going to talk about tonight is the community notification.
Mayor Miller, we do have a public comment on this item.
Oh, great, excellent, thank you.
Good evening all, Pamela Jones, Menlo Park resident, Bellhaven neighborhood. I couldn't be more thrilled and to see you all sitting here together with shared interest, which is for the safety of our community. Living in the Bellhaven neighborhood, I think I'm so glad you recognize the problems that we have been stating for decades. I hope that when you come into each area of the communities, that you also engage the residents. We're often able to see issues that may not be the type that are done by the staff that prepares the reports. And sometimes the information that comes from the reports and data is not the same type of information that you're going to get from people that are actually having the experience. So, again, I'm thrilled with this meeting, I hope that this is done on a regular basis, so that we can engage more people in the community, and we can also work towards shared interests. I'm also looking forward to having the police department involved, because of course, they have all the data in regards to the traffic and the issues that you all have to put up with when you're trying to come in and respond to us. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, the next item is going to be item D two.
We have one more speaker, Mayor Miller.
Oh, one more speaker on this one, all right.
Hi, good evening, fire board and city council. Really quickly, I was thinking when you were talking, Chief, about what it would be like if improving emergency response times were a fire hazard. Like, you know, one of the goals of the fire board is also prevention, right? So, if your goal is to, you know, reduce things like stuff that can catch fire around people's houses, maintaining perimeters, all of that, that's something you would obviously, you know, these are trade-offs that you'd be considering. And that's not the case. But I think it is the case that some things that we do to improve emergency response time are also things that can cause traffic fatalities, especially for pedestrians and cyclists. In fact, in the last year, there's been an uptick in pedestrian fatalities, and there's a lot of data that suggests that there's a confluence of factors, but larger vehicles, speed, et cetera. So, what I'm hoping that we can consider, as we think about how to maintain your incredible record of, you know, responding to, it looked like one call every hour, every day of the year, on average, with such an incredibly amazing response rate, in the face of increasing traffic gridlock and all these other things, and, you know, maintaining your equipment, all of that, which is really good stuff. I want to find the sweet spot, though, and see if we can figure out ways to do that without compromising the health of people on a day-to-day basis, because it would be awful if you were able to get places faster, but you were also having to respond to more accidents. So, you know, some things I was noticing, I was watching the 2015 viral video that was on KQED about you guys, you were driving down University Avenue, and then you were trying to get to the Dunbarton Bridge. Some of you might have seen this. And it was amazing watching you on University and Palo Alto, there were cars just like parting, like the Red Sea, as your truck moved. And then you got to the place, and they were able to do that, by the way, because there was a broad shoulder, might have even been a bike lane, nobody was parked in it, nobody was trying to drive in it. So, there was a place for them to move. And as soon as that wasn't the case anymore, you were suddenly looking at, like, maybe we got to go in the other lane here. And so, one thing to think about is, how can we design our streets, especially the arterial ones, especially the big, busy ones, so that there aren't large immovable objects in your way? And some of those immovable objects are parked cars, some of them are medians, some of them are other things, but not to bring back the bike lanes and all community or anything, but the one thing that we've talked about there that is not an immovable object or another driving car lane is potentially a bike lane that would enable people to move. So, that's one thing. And then the other thing is, I'm glad we're talking about the kinds of speed bumps that would enable you to navigate. A third is that in some places, I think maybe in Multnomah County in Portland, where they've been really progressive around vision zero issues, they've moved to a different kind of truck, and I know you have to budget for that and plan for it, and it's not cheap, but also considering what percentage of your, oops, okay, smaller trucks for the smaller things. No, I, these guys have a lot to say, so I don't want to, I don't need more time, but those were my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Katie Berusy, Menlo Park.
Okay, any more public comment cards? Okay, so, we're going to go ahead and move on to the community notification system, and is there a staff presentation on that issue?
We have one, and it's about testing of this new community notification system. Harold, do you want to kick this off, and maybe if Ryan Zolakoffre has some comments?
I think he's actually at a cert meeting tonight.
Oh, okay, I thought I saw.
Oh, there he is, oh, there he is, okay. He made it.
Yeah, so if you want to.
Yeah, we'll see if Ryan wants to come up, and definitely he's here to talk about this as well, if we need him to do that. So, one of the things, you know, to the council members and the board is already, you know, aware of this, but that we've seen in different types of tragic events, is emergency notification to the public. And, you know, as we've seen, more and more technology kind of creep in and be used as the primary methodology, if it's on your cell phone, or even, you know, people getting rid of their landlines, not everybody sleeps with their phone, maybe they put it in a different room, and so, they don't hear it. And as we've seen on some of the fires, and some of the floods, and so forth, that's not, that's an imperfect method to emergency notification. It's a good method, it works very well in a lot of different cases, but it's not the only one. So, where we've seen in some communities where they have a fire siren, that can work. We have one up on Walsh Road, it's for evacuation purposes for the dam up there. And equally, it's also for that being an area where it's one way in, one way out for wildland fire. But that's not the highest performing siren, and we just did a side-by-side test about a year ago, and subsequently, have purchased a trailer with what's called a long-range acoustical device. And what that really is, it's a speaker system. It was developed for the military, it can go up to a hundred and fifty decibels, although I wouldn't recommend that, and it can actually, with clarity, give verbal messages that you can hear and understand at pretty much a great distance. So, one of the things that, why do we buy a trailer? We bought the trailered unit to take it and test it throughout the different communities. First up on Walsh Road, and we found in the first testing that we did, that the trees, obviously, there's a problem, because they absorb the sound. So, no matter what we do, it doesn't matter if you have the best system in the world, it's not going to penetrate the canopy. And that's an issue for Atherton or anywhere that has a lot of large vegetation. So, we'll have to either get above that in height, which may work, and we think will work, because those that had to listen to the Facebook alarm system go off could very much say, "Sound does travel," and it drops down, right? Those are those rooftop speakers that were up there, that were having a problem with the fire alarm system for a while. I think we got that hopefully solved, or helped to solve that. But we know that sound travels. So, at the end of the day, what we're doing with the trailer is moving it around in the different communities, soon to be in East Palo Alto, once we worked out some messaging down there with the city, so people know what we're trying to do, specifically along San Francisco Creek. What's the goal, essentially, for the fire board? And I'm not going to speak for them, they can speak for themselves, but what they've directed myself, and Ryan, and John, and others to do, is to do this testing. We know we're probably looking at a mile square per device, we're not positive completely, that's it, could be less, could be more. And then to find buildings owned by the jurisdictions, obviously, the city, the fire district, other public entities, so that we could have agreements at no charge to have a network of these devices. One exciting thing that I'll tell you that we're working on, and we might be the first in the state, if they give us permission, is we're also in a program called Shake Alert, and our stations six and two are currently being tested to make sure that if we get an earthquake, the doors open, there's a notification in the station for the firefighters, and they actually get told how long before the quake in seconds will hit. What we're hoping to do in East Palo Alto, once we get, we've got station six already done, now we're moving down to our other new station down in East Palo Alto, and we're looking at, we have a communications tower there, it's a hundred-foot mast, is putting an LRAD on the top of that, not just for notification, but equally, that, wouldn't it be something that if the community had a notification system for an earthquake, you could do duck and cover when you heard that? And then the earthquake, within whatever many seconds, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, up to a certain Richter scale, people could do that. That'd be pretty phenomenal. So, it's taken this technology, it's trying to use it and repurpose it, not just for emergency communications, but for specific purposes when there's a threat to the community, again, wildfire, flood, earthquake. And, you know, it's nice to get notifications on your phone, like, probably some of you I get a lot, sometimes I look, I'm not really a slave to my phone, because I choose not to be, so I don't always look at it, I don't always feel compelled to be like my teenage daughter, that I got to immediately do something. But, you know, again, if you have one of those, and it's not in the room, or it's, you don't look at it, it doesn't, you don't necessarily get the communication. But we're hoping this system will be, to help solve part of that. Obviously, it's not in everybody's house, but it should be loud enough, if we grid this correctly, that you could hear it. So, I'll turn it back over to Director Coroll.
I don't know if Ryan, he'd like to add anything. If not, I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from the council, because this is something that we've discussed with Atherton as well, since our first test was on Walsh Road in Atherton.
Yeah, and I don't think we ever, you know, one of the things we could do is demo it for the council and the city staff, I mean, we haven't done that, so.
There's nothing more I'm going to add to the chief, other than the fact that we try to handle the city's capabilities, which is why we're going to have six systems to be using in the facility, infrastructure or the district's infrastructure, that would be ideal. I believe LRAD does have a website where they do that comparison of the district's capabilities on Walsh Road in regards to what they have, that would probably provide some to the educational background regarding the capabilities and what the local community and our skyline capabilities. And I can, I think, raise mountains to the current level, but nothing more, this kind of goes on our current capabilities.
Any public comment cards? Okay. So, I do, so, speaking for myself, I support it, especially supportive of verbal articulation for, so that you can specify evacuation routes. I think one of the biggest things at the interface of the wildfire area that we have here, to be able, if that does catch and come down, the housing stock in West Menlo Park is at risk, and to be able to identify that for people, which evacuation route to take. I also think, and though we don't talk about it here very much, being our proximity to Stanford Hospital, we also have to take pathogen threat seriously, and to be able to communicate that to that people effectively, if that were to happen, I think is something that's really important. So, I, we obviously can't make a decision tonight, but I certainly would be supportive of the idea of using municipal structures to go ahead and put those, that system in place.
Harold, I think it's a good idea, if the council wants to, if wants to, you know, participate or to see how this works, we can do the same thing that we've done before for Atherton. If you're interested in doing that, then you'll have a better idea as to what we're talking about. And you probably can visualize it, but it's better to see it in person.
Yeah, we'd love to see a demonstration.
We can do that.
Anyone else?
Just to, you know, to kind of summarize for you, so the other, you know, other communities
Neighborhoods or groups. So we have actually done a lot of the legwork as far as organizing CERT, but we haven't gotten a lot of response from the City of Menlo Park on taking that further. And so I don't think you need to think that you need to reinvent the wheel. There is a CERT board that works with, we have three members of each community on that board. So there is a lot of work that has been done already. So I really do encourage you to reach out and learn more about what the CERT board has been doing because we have created an organization in East Palo Alto and Atherton. Menlo Park and on Incorporated haven't been supported by our officials, but there may not have been outreach also back and forth. And so I would like to see that happen. So I encourage you to do that.
So I think what would be great is that if our liaisons again met with the liaisons from the Fire Board and then if you could, if it could be articulated, the best way that we can support the CERT program from a low-hanging fruit down to big ask. So when we go through it, we figure that out and what that looks like. And then ideally, if we could try to like, if we could try to identify like a co-event, a co-training event for the community as a goal or something like that. And then when it comes to council, after that's identified between the liaisons have flushed out whatever that looks like, it'll come to the two bodies and we can figure out what we can do. But I think that it's, I think it's certainly something that's, it sounds like overdue for our city as compared to our neighboring jurisdictions. And I, you guys, do you guys have comment as well?
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you for being here. This has been great. I am a CERT member, so whatever I can do to help move a, an action forward from the City of Menlo Park, one would be asking that at least one or two of our other council members become CERT, if they're not. The other is, we already have something established for National Night Out that the police does, maybe having a booth at that event. So there is a lot of opportunity that we have. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
I was going to ask this during the speed round, but perhaps now is a better time. Could you talk a little bit about the Emergency Operations Center and any coordination with the police?
Yeah, actually, there's, again, Ryan and John are both here from our staff, so they can certainly speak to you afterwards or, you know, feel free to give comment as well. But there's really three levels that we operate at with the city. The first one is at the government level, you have Ryan Zolikoff who are over there who's working on contract with the city. But it's at a minimum level, and that's for planning and interaction specifically through the police department and so forth. So those exercises that the city is required to have, the training for the employees and the staff that work for the city, Ryan's really responsible for making all that happen. You know, you've had some transitions in the government and so forth within the, you know, inner workings of the city. So I know Starla knows that Ryan's there, but right now that's, you know, we haven't really revisited the purpose or what we could do with that agreement and maybe change it going forward or how it would be more effective. The Emergency Operations Center is part of that. We used to train, you have a, you have an EOC here at the city. It's not ideal. We used to do those things down at our warehouse at 1376 Willa Road. We've subsequently moved, we're in East Palo Alto now. One of the proposals that we've given to the city is the district's going to get ready to redo Station 1, and there could be a dedicated EOC where Atherton, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park could all work together because you're all relatively small jurisdictions. Ryan has made some proposals regarding that. That's certainly something we could explore further because it makes sense to do that. So whether it's a room that can be reconfigured, which isn't as ideal, or just a dedicated center, it makes sense. And Station 1's a good, a good place for that based upon its location. It's 64 feet above sea level. It doesn't flood. There's a lot of benefits for being there. If we, it has a backup power system and so forth. If we redo the station, it's going to be even better. So that answers your question directly. To the second part, the CERT groups, you know, I, that group is meeting right now. So, you know, I think that, that level of, I think Cecilia raises a good point. I mean, the more council members have become CERT members, the more you see how the inner workings are there. And then maybe you see how the city can better fit and support CERT because it doesn't just belong to the district, it belongs to all the jurisdictions that it works with. So that's a, that's a way to, you know, I think, work more closely in that environment.
Yeah. The one thing I'd say though, because it's certainly incredibly important for organizing people, but what the organize, but the thing that I'm, that I would suggest is that whatever we end up doing as a result, that it not be a CERT-only event. Because what the, what, in terms of community preparedness, there's a whole lot of people out there who aren't going to get CERT trained.
Right.
They just, they have, they're, yeah, they're just not.
So let me, let me take you to a third level, right?
Right.
So you got government, you got the CERT, which is the more organized, typically start out as, you know, people that take a get-ready course and so forth. And, you know, Mayor, you mentioned the schools. So we're in the schools. Some of the classes that we'll teach, like I know our EMS coordinator was over at MA and they taught a Stop the Bleed class, which these days is a great, small, compact course to take. And essentially, it tells people how they, if someone has major bleeding for whatever reason, how you can stop that. What can you do? It's the basic, you know, short version of first aid from the old days. And that doesn't, that can be taught like Director Bernstein by a CERT member, it can be taught by a district employee. You know, again, there's, that's the granular, I think, level you're looking at within the community. Then what we discussed was not just get ready and you come to the firehouse or to a site of the city, could we go into the neighborhoods with some type of a package and say, hey, we're coming to your neighborhood on this Saturday for two hours. It's a combined effort between the city, law enforcement, ourselves, and we deliver information to that neighborhood. People get to meet each other, talk to their neighbors, you bring coffee, you bring donuts, whatever it is. It's not necessarily the coffee shop, but it's their neighborhood. And you deliver that level of a package because, to your point, a lot of those people may never become CERT members, but if we do even several things and they realize they need a disaster kit, they get information, they know what to do if there's an earthquake, they understand what to do if they have a problem, if we have a notification system, how it works and what they should know if they have that, how to stop bleeding, how to prevent a fire, what to do about crime prevention, we can cover all those things in a relatively short period of time.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what I'm looking for. Is going into neighborhood by neighborhood and bringing up people out of their homes who otherwise are just busy living their life. But the kids on that street are excited because the fire truck's there and people are going to walk out of their house and say, what's going on at the end of the street? And you get an opportunity to bring everybody around and say, hey, today's a special day in the neighborhood. We're figuring out how to, how to map our resources prepared. Here's some information for you. And by the way, we got this new speaker system going in the city. If you hear that, these are what the different sirens sound like. And as a result, we do that through all the different neighborhoods over a course of a couple of years. We're ready. At least a lot more ready than we would have been.
Yeah, and that was, I wrote a paper on this about 20 years ago. It was called The Community Classroom. And what it does, instead of expecting people to come to you, you go to them. Because everybody is busy and, you know, and ideally, and I used to, you know, I live in a great street neighborhood now. All the neighbors know each other, but I've lived in neighborhoods where people don't come out of their house. I remember a neighbor that the garage door would open, they'd drive in the garage, their garage door would close, and that would be the existence of, you know, our relationship. So, you know, getting people out and having the police car and the fire truck and everybody there for a specific purpose with a nice canned presentation, quick, easy, simple, lot of, you know, a lot of things that you can give them, I think is a great way to go. It's not really done that way, but I think it could be done that way. And it's something we've been talking about for a while.
Yeah, that would be great. And we could do it, doesn't have to be, I mean, we could just, you could make it a four-year plan. I mean, you could make it, we're going to knock off this many neighborhoods this year. But I think, but at the very start, it's coming together and figuring out what that plan is together and then what resources we need and moving forward. And I think it's a great time for us. Since we're going to have this meeting going back and forth, it's a great thing for us to metricize on what we're accomplishing each year together. So.
Chuck?
Let me mention, as one of the instructors of the Get Ready program, one of the things that you have right now is a website that could be used to publicize some of these things. I spend once, every other month, actually, I spend three hours of my time doing a course, and it's not unusual that I have only two or three people there. It wouldn't take me any more time to have 20 or even 200 people. The other thing is, it's also possible to think about perhaps engaging the Chamber of Commerce and doing a brown bag lunch in the 20 or 30 largest, largest companies here where we're, we're talking about what can be done. Because those people, even if they don't live in this community, they're here when the emergency occurs, and they need to be involved also. So there's lots of opportunity for, for preparation.
Any other, any other comments? Any questions? No? We're all good? Okay, so President Corrali.
Okay, so this is the last item, the regular item for, for regular business, and it's about the hybrid traffic signal that was brought to our attention a couple of years ago at 300 Middlefield Road between Linfield and Santa Monica. And it's something that I know that the board supported moving forward with, and we were hoping that we'd be able to partner with the city on that. So Harold, if you'd like to kick off this short report, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm mindful of time because I know you want to do the lightning round too. So just very quickly, I mean, we've done this, the district's done this before. We partnered with the town of Atherton. We did it near Almond Drawl and El Camino. How the district benefited is we have a station on that street navigating across six lanes of traffic. Even in a fire truck isn't always easy with people coming down El Camino. So what that did was it immediately improved the ability of the fire truck to safely navigate and get on El Camino real, but it also created the first crossing, and now there's several on El Camino for pedestrians. Again, improved safety. The town won, the community won because they have a safer way to cross the street, and the fire district won and improved its ability to respond and not have to stop and worry about its personnel being injured by being hit by somebody on the road where somebody's swerving and doing something crazy and running into somebody else or something else. So, you know, we think the same thing can be done on Middlefield Road. It's amazing how fast traffic can get up to speed once they get off of Willow or as they're coming to try and make the light or head into Palo Alto down Middlefield Road. Tragically, I've seen a person in the crosswalk there hit by a car. That person didn't live. You know, I've, I've been on a number of accidents of people turning onto Linfield, making a left turn there where they were rear-ended. One was a, one of the police officers some years ago where we actually had to use the jaws of life and extricate the officer out of the car. So that's, that's a difficult intersection, or that's a difficult section of roadway, not just for the fire district to move out onto the street. Equally, it's difficult for people to cross the street. I know a lot of people don't feel safe crossing the street there. I know in talking to Jen about kids and crossing the street and the undercrossing between Middle, under El Camino, all this could be part of a network where, you know, I agree with some of the comments made about safe biking. My parents were in the bike business. I married, my wife's dad owned a bike shop. I mean, I get biking. And, you know, I think sometimes putting bicycles on busy streets is not necessarily a good thing. Where in this particular case, using Middle, having an undercrossing, putting people more through a calmer residential neighborhood, but then with other devices that help them navigate through the community on streets where there isn't as much traffic, and it's funner and nicer and safer and healthier to ride your bike, that makes a lot of sense. So if there's a way that we can support that, that was the purpose of, of this proposal.
So at the outset, before I pass, I'm just going to say thank you for the offer to work together on it. I don't want to let it pass before we say that. City, City Mayor Robbins.
I was just going to suggest this could go to the liaisons as well, if that's acceptable to both the board and the, and the city council. But from an administrative perspective, I think that we need to appoint liaison so we can bring that back on the next council meeting, if that's your direction.
Yeah. So, okay, so I think it's actually ripe for discussion again between the two, the two jurisdictions. And so we can have our liaisons meet on that. And then it'll more than likely come back to us with a comment from professional staff. My, what I've just, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds because we have eight minutes left, but my understanding is that there, there's some engineering componentry that they're going to need, that's going to be worked out with the district and with our transportation engineering staff. But I think the, I think everyone's on the same page in terms of intent. So the intent is we want to partner with you to make it safer, and we very much appreciate the offer to work with us to do that and be partners in that. So any, any public comment? No? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move to the speed round. We're going to pass to President Corrali. Speed round is, I, everyone just goes around, if there's something on their mind that we haven't touched, they raise it. I don't think we have time for people to respond, but it's something that our, that our councils can, our different jurisdictions can take up later and follow up on our liaison scan.
Okay, this, this speed round, I'd like to start with Rob and go this way so that we, we get around our.
Okay. I've been, this is my eighth year on the fire district, and this is great that, thank you for meeting with us and basically communicating our, our common goals and objectives that we want to go forward with. And I'd just like to leave with, for the council to think of joint projects that the fire district can still work. And I know we've got the, the signal light, but I'm sure there are other things that only can also help the Menlo Park, but help our entire fire district community also. And I just want to thank the mayor. We've always had an open communication format, which has always been great. And Starla, we go back, gosh, when I was with DEA and your son. So it's great to see a real friendly face. Only professional, only professional. So, but thank you.
Jim.
You know, as the newest member of the board, I've been visiting all the, the facilities in the district. I have found it to be very useful. I've had a chance to meet some of the men and women that actually do the job and, and you gain a better appreciation for just how professional they are, how dedicated, how motivated they are to do the best they can for the, for the communities. I would encourage all of you to do the same if you can find the time. I would suggest at least one new one and one old one, just so you can, you know, make the comparison and see, you know, how, how wonderful the new facilities are, how very functional they are. And along with that is the, John Johnston is the, the fire marshal. We're very fortunate to have a very robust inspection program that really serves the community very well. You may not be familiar with what they do or how they do it, and I think that would be time well spent as well. Thank you.
I had three things I wanted to mention. First, some of you who know me, I've spent many years speaking passionately in this room about various issues. And I don't know that I've always succeeded, but one thing that I've always felt was wrong was just rudeness and ad hoc attacks on people and so forth. And I, I want to apologize to city council members, many of, most of whom are no longer here, for actions on some of the fire board members who I think were ultimately rude and disrespectful and so forth. I mean, ultimately, the heart of communication seems to me to be respect. It's something that I'm committed to. I am the liaison with our chair, or our president, to the City of Menlo Park, and I, I would look forward to working with you cooperatively and so forth. I do want to mention two things that I think are issues that we didn't have time to deal with tonight. One of them is the train. And I think the, the chief has a lot to say about the safety of the train. Basically, a rocket ship hurtling through just mere feet from residences, hurtling through at speeds in excess of 100 miles an hour is a recipe for disaster. Not to mention the vehicles and pedestrians who are at grade level. I know it's a difficult issue. I would urge you to look very hard at undergrounding this. In the long run, that's what we're going to have to do. We can't have this stuff hurtling through at these kinds of speeds. If you look at the ridership level for Menlo Park, it's so low, we're serving several thousand people a day, and we're inconveniencing many, many more thousands in backups. We're, we're delaying our truck, our engines and trucks getting back and forth across the tracks. This is a very serious issue for safety. And I, I, I think, I think that you really do need to take a very hard look at this. And, you know, for everyone who's ever said, oh, it's too expensive, I don't believe anybody has ever costed it at all. They just say it's expensive. So that to me, I, I'll save my other one for a liaison comment in the interest of time.
I want to thank you for, thank you, I need, I need help, you know, any opportunity. Thank you for allowing us to come and to share. I think I was very optimistic about the meeting, but now I'm very encouraged. I'm encouraged by some of the comments and language that was used by the city council, as well as the areas of, that is near and dear to the district, and I think is near and dear to your, your, the community of Menlo Park as well. Those areas of looking at the LRAD, looking at CERT in particular, and also working with the community as much as possible. And someone mentioned, we was talking about the, the CERT program and getting out to the community. It kind of reminded me of the, the bookmobile that goes around to the, to the communities. And it's, it's something that you don't really see a lot of, but you see a lot of it, and it's very effective. You may hit one or two kids here and there of a family, but over time, it's consistent, it'll get around to everyone knowing what the library system is about. So hopefully, we can build our own CERT mobile and get around to all the community. So thank you again for having us.
Thank you again as well, on behalf of the fire board and the fire district. I think that we're going to be leaving this meeting with a lot of great ideas to collaborate. One thing that I would like to continue discussing, and maybe we can talk about this in the liaison meeting, is how we can work together to, to make Station 77 in the Bell Haven neighborhood more part of the, more part of our fire district in the community. Station 2 in East Palo Alto is the busiest station, not only in the fire district, but also in San Mateo County. And I think the Bell Haven station, Station 77, is pretty close behind that, and certainly not slowing down. So whatever we can do to, whether it's to acquire the land or, you know, continue working in the way that we've been working, either way, we'd like to continue the discussion, and it's something that I hope that we can afford with in our liaison meeting. Thank you.
I just want to thank you and say that I think it's been an incredibly productive meeting. And I asked about the Emergency Operations Center, and I'll pass it along to councilmember Combs.
Cool. Yeah, I'd just add my appreciation to the mayor and the board president for putting this together. I also found it incredibly informative. I would only say that if, you know, sort of this meeting represents a new phase of the relationship between the protection district and the city council, of which we all hope and want, and that we've covered a lot of things that as it sort of filters from here to staff or to liaisons, I'd say let's look for some easy, quick wins. Because there's lots on here, but I think let's just, you know, look for some examples of a renewed and new relationship. And then I think we can, we can build on that.
I just wanted to say thank you again, and I am throwing my name out there to be on the subcommittee.
We'll handle the subcommittee. I think it has to be noticed on the agenda for us to handle that, but, but, but we'll note on the agenda. Thank you. So candidly, a lot of what we talked about tonight, the laboring ore is obviously the work that you already do. And I think what you've heard from us tonight is that we want to support you. And we don't just want to support you in the, in the projects we discussed, but we want to be co-partners in those if we can. And I think Councilmember Combs raises a great, a great fact that it's going to, our liaisons are going to have to figure out how we do that judiciously together. But we also want to support you in our work product. And that goes back to what we talked about tonight in item D1. And as I, as I said, as I indicated to you, I think that, that, that document is something we're going to go back to time and again to look at and talk about. And so we're really grateful for that. There's a lot happening in the city right now, and this meeting's been incredibly informative to do that. So want to thank all of you, obviously, and then also want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity to thank the men and women who serve in your district for the residents of Menlo Park. Thank you.
And I just want to thank both staff members tonight for helping put this together because this was an incredible meeting, and it's in large part due to the great staff that both the city and the fire district have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So this portion is adjourned, and we'll go ahead and move now to regular session set up. So we'll take a five-minute break. Oh, excuse me, the special city council session to order at 7:00 PM. So all the same council members are present, and Catherine Carlton is, excuse me, Councilmember Carlton is. are present, and Catherine Carlton is, excuse me, Councilmember Carlton is joining us now by phone. So the first thing to do is go ahead and report that there was no action taken in the closed session, and then we will go ahead and, excuse me.
Hello? Hi, Councilmember Carlton, are you able to hear us okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the first thing we're going to do right now is take public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once per public comment for a limited three minutes. Please state your name, address, or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Ms. Herron, do we have any public comment this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Does any, would any council member like to poll anything from the consent calendar?
Yes, I'd like to poll D1.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and poll D1. Any other items that want to be polled from the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion? Excuse me, do you want a full discussion on D1, or is it something that can be resolved with, just with question to staff?
I'd like to have a discussion on it.
Okay, so then can I have a motion on item, on item D2? Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Combs moves. May I have a second?
I second.
Let's go ahead and vote. Sorry, it's taking a while for my screen to come up. Okay, council, Councilmember Carlton, may I have your vote?
I voted aye.
Councilmember Carlton votes aye. Ms. Herron?
Remember, you'll hold on just one moment. We may have a public comment on D2.
Okay, do we have any comment cards on item D1?
We do have one comment card on D1.
Okay. Item, for the record, item D2 passed unanimously?
Correct.
Okay, then go ahead and call, call public comment on item D1. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, council members and staff. I want to reiterate the letter that I sent to you on the CIN. I think I did have the wrong letter, numbering, because I think I said D2. At any rate, this is in regards to the Library Commission and the Bellhaven Neighborhood Library Committee, bin lack, and the recommendations. I ask that you remove this, either at least that section from this item, or you put a hold on the entire project. The problem with the recommendation to merge the Bellhaven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee is that it did not have community input, and there was, there's no documentation, as I stated in my letter, from the meetings that were had where it was discussed and community was very clear, they wanted to have a separate, a separate committee. The feeling is that if you merge the two committees, that Bellhaven will become diluted, and that's what has traditionally happened with the, with any of the needs of the Bellhaven area. The second part of that is you have history from the Complete Streets Commission, that when they first merged Complete Streets, the Bicycle Commission and the Streets Commission, Transportation Commission, they had 14 members, and then they honed down to 11. It was almost impossible, or it was very difficult for them to work with 11 members. So you're asking for 11 people to try and make decisions on a commission, and that's what the recommendation is for the library, for the Library Commission, is to make that eight, 11 members. If you absolutely, absolutely have to have this decision made tonight, then my recommendation would be is to make it nine members. You have two seats that are open next month, put two additional members on there, and make those members come from the Bellhaven community, specifically, and that those are people that are actually live in the Bellhaven Neighborhood and have had some active participation. We must have people that are deeply engaged with the community, and not someone that may live there, but works elsewhere and does not have any real relationship with the people. So those are my comments. I really urge you, Ashley, to take this off the agenda tonight, because it's really, really messy. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? No. So Mayor Protem Taylor, you polled it, so I'll let you go ahead and address it first.
Okay, I'll start with the, the bin lack question. The reason I polled it is because the last time we discussed it, I clearly stated that I would like to see bin lack operate independently, and that we can place another charge on the group, on the committee, so that they can exist until the library is built. I don't see the advantage of having it absorbed by the Library Commission. My other concern is the timeline. The timeline is, it's from, I believe it, the build out is expected at 2025, and I think that we need to cut that by at least two years. So those were my concerns and the reason I polled it, and then also there was some, something else as far as the City Council policies as well.
I don't think that tonight we can go ahead and comment on the timeline, because it's, under the action item has to do with the formation of the commission. I think it needs to come back to us to talk with estimated build timeline in a separate document with staff, going ahead and talking about why that is. But speaking specifically to the, to the question about the number of commissioners, did you want to, did you have a comment on that, Councilmember Nash, on the number of commissioners on it? Because I was going to let staff respond unless you wanted to go first. You can go ahead, go ahead, and then we'll let, and then we'll let...
No, I actually have a comment about the committee, but not about the number of commissioners.
Okay, so then, Mr. Robison, did you want to go ahead and respond?
Yes, I understand that there's still some concern on the composition of bin lack and the Library Commission. So what I would like to recommend or suggest is that the council appoint to, and we can bring this back next time, to an ad hoc committee to deal with these issues and talk them through, and hear from the library staff so that you have that input as well. And we can, we can throw in the timeline so that there's a clear understanding of why the staff thinks it'll take that long, and then the council can act accordingly.
I'm, I'm actually, in light of the other work that we have to do this evening, happy to go ahead and create that ad hoc committee and then take this up at the next meeting. Is that agreeable to everyone? Just Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I, I just had a question for, for staff. Is it possible from the recommendations as part of this, this agenda item to remove everything pertaining to, or the recommendations pertaining to bin lack, and keep all of the other recommendations? But I, the mayor Protem had some questions, so I'd want to understand what her other questions were about everything else, but if they weren't substantive, whether, you know, we could approve all of the other suggestions, but, but remove the bin like, the bin like items?
I think you can.
All right. Mayor Protem Taylor?
That's fine with me. The, the other issue that I had questions on had to do with the council policy, since they are all under one item.
All right, well, come back to the council policy. Then we can go ahead and discuss the council policy issue now. So let's go ahead, I think there's support on everyone to just go ahead and remove the bin lack item until our next meeting, and to have an ad hoc committee go ahead and discuss that with staff. What, if there's a discussion about the council, any council policy in this item, we should go ahead and have that now. So Mayor Protem Taylor?
Thank you. I would like to suggest that we create a policy around CCIN, where we have an automatic reply, so that the community who posts on there knows that we're reading it. I'm not sure how that would work, but it made sense to have that be a part of the City Council policy, if it were one of the council to reply, or if it was staff. I'm not sure how that would work. But I've heard a lot of concerns that people who post on CCIN don't know if we're reading them.
Ms. Jerome Robinson?
We can certainly look into that. I, I think that what we have also talked about is a more comprehensive approach to community input to the City Council through new software. But as an interim measure, I can try and determine the immediacy with which we could let people know that they are being read.
Thank you. All right. With that being the case, are there any other items that anyone would like to discuss in terms of accounts, in terms of this item?
I have another question.
Councilmember Carlton?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was, in the requirements, I thought it was kind of odd that it said in most cases. It's far down to, you have to live in Menlo Park, which I pretty much think is a low bar, and being an adult. Why, why do you say in most cases, you have to live in Menlo Park and be an adult? It's kind of just, it's odd, that maybe those should just be requirements. I know maybe we don't want to paint ourselves in a corner, but I was just going to throw that out there.
Councilmember Carlton, I'm, I can tell that you're talking about living in Menlo Park, but I can't, I really can't make out your comments. Is there, if there's a way to...
Oh, about, sorry, I was saying, living in Menlo Park and over 18, and being an adult are the two requirements left. I was just asking, why does it say in most cases? Do we need that? If you think it does, that's fine. I'm not too worried about it, but I just thought it was kind of odd. I was going to ask about it.
Councilmember Carlton, I'm really sorry. We haven't really, it's very difficult to understand you.
Sorry, I'll take my, my headphones off. Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
Okay, great. I was going to ask if we strike the, we strike the bit that says in most cases, just because it seems like you should be an adult, and you should live in Menlo Park. But I understand that maybe we don't want to paint ourselves in a corner. So I was just going to throw that up for discussion.
So can I respond to that?
Certainly.
So there are two things. Periodically, we have committees that are appointed that may include business owners or, or commercial property owners that may not be residents of Menlo Park. If they own property, likely they are adults, but they, they wouldn't necessarily be. I can't think, it seems to me that in the, at some point in the past, we had an advisory committee for community services that may have had teenagers on it, or we had like a teen advisory committee. I don't know that we have one today, but, but we've, periodically, we've, we've, the council has established special membership criteria, and so that's why it says in most cases, because it's not in all cases.
Yeah, and actually...
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a great example. Belmont actually just had a, a commissioner who was, who was a teenager, who, I guess, from a very young age, started serving in the city, and they just celebrated that commissioner, because he's leaving to go to Columbia. So there are, I think, I think that we, I hear what you're saying, Kat, and I appreciate you throwing it out for discussion. I think it's, it was a good, a good thing to discuss, and I think, I think for me, Bill's comments have sort of crystallized my thinking on it.
Okay, then I, then I move that we accept the, I move for approval.
Any other things to talk about? No? No? All right, do you have a second?
That's minus the bin lack.
Minus the bin lack, approval minus the bin lack, and that'll come back after, and we can go ahead and appoint ad hoc after we vote.
Yeah, okay, a second.
Okay. Okay, and who do we want to appoint to do ad hoc on that? So Ms., Council, sorry, Mayor Protem Taylor, and who else would like to do it?
I actually wanted to suggest perhaps we get people who might be on opposite sides of the issue, or, is, anyway, is there any way to make sure that we don't, that we're encompassing all viewpoints?
I, I can, candidly, I don't, I'm not predisposed to one, one way or the other personally, so.
The, the issue being, like, one way of whether the, it should be merged or not?
I believe that's, yes.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's fair. I, I think, like, I've, I've expressed that I'm skeptical of, of, of bin lack remaining independent, but I don't feel that that's like, like, you know, I'm wedded to that, and then I can't be moved off of that position. And then I, I think even if I were on some sort of, you know, subcommittee, again, it's always in my mind that whatever we're proposing, in theory, we're trying to get like three votes for. So, yeah, I'm not inclined to volunteer, if, I mean, to be direct, but if there, if we're in need of, of people, then I'm more than happy to, to make myself available.
The reason why I ask is I would be happy to volunteer, but I will state upfront that I also thought that the bin luck should be separate from the Library Commission.
I don't, I don't think in this case...
Although I'm happy to keep an open mind.
Yeah, I think in this case, honestly, I think it's, I think that that means that there's two people who need to be convinced by staff. So I don't think, like, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a bad thing, so it's fine. So, so that's fine. That, if that works for you guys.
So I would be happy to serve.
Okay. All right, so then we can go ahead and, and, and have that be the case. So the next item we have this evening for regular business is accept the 2018, 2019 mid-year budget report, approve recommended 2018, 19 budget amendments, and authorize the city manager to amend agreements with Alta Planning and Design, and Knoll and TAM Architects. We have a staff report right now. Dan, I'm sorry, everyone, Dan Jacobson will be making the report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good evening, mayor and council members. For the agenda today, we'll go through the general fund. We'll cover revenues and expenditures there, a summary of the expenditure adjustments that we are recommending, overall recommended budget adjustments that include some other funds, and then just briefly go over the designated fund balance for the general fund and where we stand currently. So for the general fund revenues, this is the same table that's included in the staff report, and I will run through it generally just top to bottom. The taxes category has a required mid-year amendment to cover two major categories. The first is property taxes, which came in higher than expected. A large portion of that is the excess ERAF, or the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. We did receive the full amount back from the county. We budget, or have in the past budgeted for 50% of that, so receiving the full amount does increase that. Offsetting that amount is transient occupancy tax, or hotel tax, which we project to be somewhat lower than the budgeted amount. It is substantially higher than last year's due to the opening of new, several new hotels, but lower than the amount that we budgeted. Moving down to licenses and permits and charges for services, the licenses and permits negative adjustment is largely driven by building permits. We expected a substantial amount of growth in this category, which has not fully materialized, which is the result, or which is driving this negative amendment. Offsetting that in charges for services are some fairly substantial developer payments. Many of these are not structural, but they are planned for at least a number of years. And then a small one on interest and rent income as a result of rates increasing. The last one you'll see on there, the transfers and assigned fund balance. The assigned fund balance is a result of encumbrance carryovers, so purchase orders which were open at the end of the year, which were left open for, to cover any additional payments required there. This is going to be offset entirely in the expenditures for a net zero. Under the expenditures, again, I'll work through just top to bottom on this one. So personnel, you will notice that there is one recommended amendment for salaries and wages. This is strictly to cover accrued vacation paid out to staff members who had large balances when leaving, and to cover the Police Officers Association contract that was recently approved, as there was a cash-out provision in there. Fringe benefits... Fringe benefits is completely untouched as a result of this. There is no additional cost to pension liability or other medical payments as a result of these. These are strictly payout numbers. Moving down, the operating expense, services, fixed assets, and capital outlay, and repair and maintenance, those are the assigned fund balance encumbrance carryover numbers, so those add up to the number that you saw on the previous slide. So, again, a net offset for zero. And the last one on there, the special projects and transfers, these transfers represent previously approved city council actions throughout the year, and so this is simply the formal budgeted, budget amendment to cover those ones. So, again, a summary of the expenditure adjustments, there is one additional appropriation for accrued vacation. No additional benefit or operating requests, other than those encumbrance carryovers, and the previously approved appropriations, and there are three of them that I'll just outline here, the heritage tree ordinance update for $100,000, traffic management plan for Baywood Avenue, Clover Lane, Blackburn Avenue, and Marmona Drive, $120,000, and Oak Grove Avenue Bike Improvements, $160,000. These collectively add up to the $380,000 that you saw in transfers on the previous slide. So, these are the net effects of the recommended budget adjustments. Revenues increasing by 2.08 million, expenditures increasing by 1.57, transfers out increasing by 3, or .38, for a net change in budget of $128,000. So, this is a surplus increase over the .63 million that was expected at the beginning of the budget season. And then in the other funds, this is a collective number, these were outlined in the staff report for which funds they were, but a net increase of .19 million on those ones. The last thing that we have, or the second to last thing, is the designated fund balance. So, this is really just a picture of where we are in terms of where the funds in the general fund are designated for. Nothing in particular to highlight here that should be of, that should be surprising compared this year to last year. I would say the only thing to note is the other purposes line includes both the encumbrance carryover, as well as the $1 million that's been earmarked for the Menlo Park City School District, the mitigation of effects there, and the unassigned fund balance. So, the only other item that I have is there were a couple of projects that don't need budget amendments, but they do need contract amendments in order to continue work on them. There were some slight scope increases on those. So, rather than having additional staff reports, we included those in the mid-year budget amendment request at this, this time. So, with that, I will take any questions?
Any questions? Do we have public comment on this item? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any questions on the phone?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no question, any discussion, then I need a motion and second to accept the 2018, 19 mid-year budget report and approve the recommended 2018, 19 budget amendments, and authorize the city manager to amend the agreements with Alta Planning, Design, and Knoll and Tam Architects. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Have a second? Councilmember Carlton, do you want to do the honors?
I'll second. That's fine.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Yep, so we can go ahead now and move on to item E2, 2019 City Council Priorities and Work Plan. And so this is a continued item. We've already taken public comment on this item and closed public comment twice, so we're not going to be taking public comment tonight. We also aren't going to be asking you to do the staff report again, but there may be questions from council members now, and we'll move to that part of the, the item. So, do any council members have any questions for staff? Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to, are we going first through CIP, or how do you want to proceed through this?
So, the first thing that, first thing I'd just like to do is just, you can go ahead and ask. Go ahead, Nick.
Mr. Mayor and council, put on the dais for you this evening is a, are the slides that require city council action that were presented at the last meeting. So, as you flip through those, that's, those are the points that we're asking city council for direction.
Right, so the first thing I was, I was gonna, what I wanted to do is I wanted to let council members ask any clarifying questions. And then, the, the thing that I wanted to talk about with everyone first was, did we want to talk about just, did we want to talk about what our overlying objectives were as a result of the work plan? So, were there some overlying unifying themes that we wanted to go ahead and say, "This is what we're going to do this year"? And then after we do that, then look at this work plan and look at the CIP and say, "Okay, does this match the vision that we have for the year"? I think it's really important that we just, it doesn't have to be for a long time, but that we take a step, take a moment, step back and say, "What is our vision"? Like, what do we, as a council, when this year is over, there will be projects that we've looked at that certainly will be proud of, but did it match what our intent was vision-wise for the city? So, and it could be that we embark down this road briefly and decide, "Ah, maybe, maybe not worth it, but I thought it was at least worth the discussion". Any feedback? Councilmember Nash?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I have not prepared for this, so I need a second to gather my thoughts.
All right. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I, I think, sort of generically, and I certainly think this, this plays out in, in the work plan and the CIP, it's a sort of lot of, like, you know, housekeeping matters, for, for lack of a better description, you know, very much sort of core, bread and butter municipal product, projects. And, and I like that. That certainly would reflect how I would want to see, you know, the city prioritize itself over, over the next 12 months, and so, but, but I don't know. I don't know if, if that, that vision is not aligned with how other council members see it, but, but as I look at the, the projects, that, that's what I see. And, and I think that that reflects what, what I think are, are the priorities for the city.
Yeah, I mean, I can say that when I looked at this year from the outset, number one, we, we accomplished, like, the big goal. We have our city manager, like, and we did that early, but that was like a big goal as we approached the year, and then also making sure that staff was in a good place, our professional staff. And I think that, from everything I can tell, professional staff is in a good place. What I really would like to accomplish, and I'm not sure we do that tonight, is creating, I think we need as a city to create a little more, a little more clear definition of the interaction of public with our professional staff and our interaction with professional staff, and everyone understanding what our different roles are. Council's policy, commissions, our advisory, and professional staff provides their professional judgment and their capacities, and that we give each other room to do each other's work respectfully. And I'm not saying that we haven't in the past, but I'm saying the lines and division has gotten blurred at times, and I think led to some, led to, sometimes, I think, just misunderstanding because of that. So, I think it's something that I'd like to actually talk about with our commissions, and talk about, and then us internally. I mean, we know we talked about council goals and procedures earlier, but I think it doesn't, it's really just something in the way that we comport ourselves, so that it's always be mindful of. But I think that we're well on that road, very excited about what I see in that respect. And then, ideally for me, vision-wise for the city, and I know Councilmember Carlton can speak to, but it seems like for the last six years on council, we've had very big things happening. Big projects, big, you know, we had the specific plan, and we had the general plan, and we had, you know, big developments, and, and all those things were very important, and that work must continue. But vision-wise, while that continues, we also, and we've already embarked on this road, but the economy's been very hot, and we've already dealt with, with our tenant relocation, but we have some other things to deal with those who have felt the heat of the, of the warmth of the economy. And in dealing with the heat, the warmth of the economy, I think we also step back and we look at prioritizing the ramifications of that, in terms of how that's affecting our neighborhoods, the quality of life in our neighborhoods, and also the, and also, frankly, the safety of people moving around in our neighborhoods and our children. I think that all of that, all of that great work and inertia that we had over the last six years is continuing to happen, but I think now, in terms of prioritizing what we're thinking about, we have to look at what's happening around the edges of that, and how it affects people internally in the city. So, that's sort of like my, where I am right now, but I'd love to hear how you guys are thinking about that. And then, obviously, so that would be making sure that we incorporate the environment into that, making sure that we incorporate equity in that, making sure that we, and then, council member, sorry, Mayor Protem Taylor and I later, too, want to talk with you guys a little bit, a little later on, too, about how we incorporate that in terms of some equity and equity and education opportunity that potentially is starting to present itself. Mayor Protem Taylor?
Thank you. And I really appreciate you bringing this up, because that's where my direction has been, and my three priorities, I believe, are looking at what is needed in the city of Menlo Park, and prioritizing our residents and not development. And I looked at this as having three themes, possibly four, and then prioritizing what's on our project list. The first would be transportation and traffic. I see safe routes, the school and safe routes for our community in general, as being a practice, as opposed to needing to be a priority. It's what we already do in Menlo Park. The second is infrastructure. We need to reinvest in communities and just coming out of the fire district meeting and thinking about the needs in District One, specifically in the Bellhaven neighborhood, that need to be looked at sooner than later. The third are city services. Every time I walk by our pool in Bellhaven, it's usually being used by someone other than community. So, why aren't city services for residents, and how can we make that a more, make access a priority? There are some other projects that I can put underneath each one of these themes, but just thinking about how to simplify and make whatever our priorities are more digestible, and making our community members, the residents in Menlo Park, the priority of our goals.
And I don't see any other lights on. Councilmember Carlton, did you have any thoughts?
I agree with what's been said previously. You know, the main things that we have to deal with are obvious. I'm happy that this year, it seems that we're going to have the opportunity to finish a lot of the, the things that we've had on our list for, for many years, and have that accomplishment of, of the many little things dealt with. However, I still want to see us move forward in addressing traffic. I still want to see us addressing housing, in particular, everyone kind of has their pet thing. In particular, I'd like to see us addressing teacher housing. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great. You know, there's equity in education, you know, I completely agree with, and that moves through into the teacher housing aspect as well, and making sure that we've got the best teachers available for our schools. And, and of course, the environmental issues, I'm, I'm still very passionate about. Traffic, housing, the environment would probably be my, my top three. However, I'm really happy to be moving forward on the list of a lot of things that I've seen on this, on this list for years, and I, I'm delighted to be moving forward on these.
Okay. Transportation, housing, the environment. Thank you very much. Councilmember Nash?
In particular, teacher housing.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to see us really focus on the quality of life for our residents in Menlo Park, across all of Menlo Park, and make sure that it's equitable. Specifically, I think that we need to work on our, on safe streets, and make it, look at the jobs housing imbalance, and really focus on that, and on affordability of, at all levels, housing affordability at all levels of affordability. I think we need to look at sustainability and our impact on the environment, and what we can do there. Transparency of our government and of what we do is also something that is incredibly important, and focusing on doing what we do smartly within our resourcing, available resourcing, and the staffing that's available, so that we don't stretch too thin, that we do things once we do them right, and then move on to the next thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs? Did you have anything you want to add? No? Okay, so, I'm looking at these, and there's groupings that we could try to do. What I am hesitant to do, because there's a lot of different things here, what I'm hesitant to, I'm hesitant to try to group them now. I mean, some of these transparency and management of resources are good government things. Safe streets and transportation, and potentially infrastructure are, are similarly, I could think, could be similarly related. Jobs housing, housing, those are related. There's, so there's things that we can group together if we want to take the opportunity to do that. This wasn't on the agenda tonight. If you guys want to have something where we sit down and think about, like, what our mission statement is, and have a time to think about it coming into the meeting, we could do that. But I wanted to prime us on the themes that we think are important to us, and hear those themes from each other before we go through this list. Because I think that it's, I think it's kind of important, as we pick these things, that we think about what's important to us value-wise that we accomplish this year, and what's, and then also what's important value-wise to our teammates. And so, that's the other thing that's going to happen right now. From experience in this, we all may not agree on, like, on what a goal should be, but ultimately, this should be a team-building exercise for us and for staff. Like, one, my great hope for this, when I walk out here tonight, is not that I got all my projects done, but that as a team, we're all on board, staff's on board, and we all felt like we had a really good discussion about where we're going. So. So, Mayor Protem Taylor?
I have a, I don't know if this is a question or just a statement. So, the position that I was coming in with having the three themes didn't include the CIP. That was just the priorities. With the CIP, I was looking at moving anything that's related to signaling, which would move traffic, as being a tier one. Anything related to the climate being a tier one. So, I'm not sure if that was also a direction you wanted to go in with the priorities, or were we just doing a priority list?
I think that's important. So, I think when we, so I think now what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead, and I think we'll lead into the CIP, and we have an understanding now of what the, I have an understanding now that that's important to you, and I'm going to be thinking about that. Well, I'll be thinking about that as we approach the CIP, and I think staff will have, some of the CIP projects, probably they're going to have an opinion on whether or not it's appropriate to move the tiering around, and we'll listen to that. But what would be great, it'd be that, and we may not do it tonight, but when, later on, when, when projects come to us during the year, we can go back and sort of tie that to what our mission or intent is for the year. We can understand that this is moving the needle in this area for us as a policy matter. So. So, I'm going to end our brainstorming session around that real quickly now, because we have to, we have to get moving. But Mr. Pagaros, if you want to go ahead and lead us through the first item to look at?
Certainly. Judy, could you put the presentation up? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing for the council's consideration this evening are the budget principles. You have a packet in front of you that walks through the changes that staff presented at the last week's meeting. We're happy to discuss any of these changes. The blue comments that are highlighted were identified by staff, and the red were identified as a result of the goal sitting session on February 2nd. So, that's new language that came to the council last week, but we didn't have an opportunity to discuss.
At the outset, I think they're great. Does anyone have any criticism or questions about these? Does anyone have any criticism or questions about these? Mayor Protam, Taylor?
So, not sure if this is a question or criticism. So the, the idea of striving to balance the resources and requirements of each area of the city in an equitable manner, it's hard for me to, to fully support that statement considering the lack of reinvestment in the Bellhaven neighborhood. And this is things that my, or these are statements that my constituents have brought to my attention to make sure to bring up while I'm on council because there hasn't been an equitable process in that. And maybe we're the only community that actually understands that firsthand. But I'm not sure how to address that statement, but I wanted to bring that to staff's attention and to council's attention.
So I think that, so I think this is partially an acknowledgement of that concern. So I think this is like a forward-looking that we're going to strive to do it, addressing the concern and criticism of the public that it may not have been that way in the past. So.
And I'm not sure if that's enough. I think that's a part of the challenge that I'm having and that my constituents are having as well. And I'm not sure how to address that verbally other than stating it exactly how I just did.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any item on the, any comments on the 2019-20 budget principles? Okay.
On the budget principles?
On the budget principles, yeah, we're going to move to adopt those first.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Anyone want to offer any amendments to them? Nope? Then let's go ahead and, should you want us to move to adopt them right now then?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So if I could have a motion? Councilmember Nash?
I move to adopt the budget principles as written.
Have a second. I'll second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Carlton, can I have your vote, please?
It's all right. Councilmember Carlton, we need an aye or a no? Did we lose her?
We must have.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the vote. And so the next item?
The motion does pass with Councilmember Cat abstaining and Vice Mayor Taylor dissenting.
Okay. Well, the next thing we're going to do is go ahead now and move on to the, well, actually, Mr. Pogaros, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you'd like us to look at next?
So moving through the packet. So moving through the packet, we have page six that I'd like to draw. Hi, Councilmember Carlton, can you hear us?
Okay. Yes, I'm back on. Sorry about that. I would have voted for it, so I can put that.
Actually, Mr. Pogaros, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you'd like us to look at next? Councilmember Carlton, I think we're picking up a second person in the room with you.
No, sorry, I have to, I'm watching.
Oh, really?
There's the replay.
Sweet. I'm international. All right.
You are. That's how much we, that way I can see when the, when the staff give presentations.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and mark for the record, Councilmember Carlton was a yes vote. Great. Mr. Pogaros?
Very good. So moving on to the capital improvement program prioritization, feedback that the staff received from goal-setting was to make some minor adjustments to the prioritization of projects. You'll see here on page six in front of the council and on the screens for those watching in the audience, the changes that were proposed. First, the Chrysler Pump Station Improvement Project was moved from tier two to tier one. The Welcome to Menlo Park Monument Sign Project was moved from tier three to tier two. And then the downtown parking structure study, study was moved from tier two to tier three. At this time, the staff is, is seeking the city council to take action to accept the prioritization as they were presented in the staff report, which reflect the changes that are here on this slide.
Great. And I, I'm just going to take the opportunity to say that I've spoken with some of the residents in opposition to Sharon Road Sidewalk, who had actually written in, and they are open to design discussion. I think a lot of the concerns, I want to apologize to those who were concerned anxiety-wise about how quick this was coming down. There's been community concern that thought that this was just going to happen to them and just wanted to clearly state that the, has always been the attention, intention that there'd be a robust design process with the city as we've done in the past in sidewalks, where we're out there meeting with them, with the tape measurer, talking about different alternatives. And I think that, and so that there will be, that will be taking place later on in this year when, when staff has the ability to do so. And I'm being told that now, that might not even be until August, so. But, but appreciate that and, and appreciate that folks are ready to talk about and engage with us. And to be clear, not everyone is, but some, some are. Any other comments or questions about the CIP? Councilmember Nash?
I'm wondering whether you want all our comments on CIP right now?
Ideally, yes.
Okay. Okay, first of all, on the city buildings and systems, I actually think some of my question, I'm wondering whether we should have add an emergency operations center to the CIP. I had heard late last year that there was some concern about our emergency operations center and whether it was sufficient for an emergency. And earlier tonight with the Fire District, it sounds like it might make sense to do something in combination, but just to have a project. And I don't know if that's in the CIP or not. I know that.
Well, the staff can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I don't think we have a current EOC, Emergency Operations Center budget. The police chief, who's not able to be here tonight, has talked to me about proposing it in the upcoming CIP, but his, his estimate is in the 15 to $25 million range. So I would be a supporter of not adding it tonight. We, I think it's sufficient if the council tells us to pursue looking into it, including looking into it with, collaboratively with other surrounding jurisdictions, but I think we would want more information before we make that big of a budget decision.
That's fine. I just wanted it on our radar screen, however you want it. Okay. And then in addition to that, I'm wondering whether the Climate Action Plan, which was tier two, should be tier one? And I apologize, I didn't catch that before. I don't know.
Is that, the Climate Action Plan is in the CIP?
It is, right there.
So. Why would that be in the CIP? That's confusing to me.
Understood. The city has historically used the CIP or the Capital Improvement Program budget for two purposes. The first is to provide for infrastructure projects, but we've also used it as sort of a way to build funds to accomplish a larger project in the future. And that, this is one of those examples where we put aside $100,000 a year and, and as projects are identified, which you'll see later in the, in the work plan discussion, there are very specific projects that would draw from that project funding. So as the council reviews this particular item, I think tier two is sufficient unless there's a specific project that you would like to advance and then that process.
It sounds like this is a, so basically this is like a, a climate action plan slush, slush fund that projects, or fund that projects go to to take money out of?
It's a savings account.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense. This is separate from the Climate Action Plan that has been, that would be implemented by Ms. Lucky, is that right? Or Ms., I'm sorry. Yeah, Ms. Lucky.
Funding for, for the sustainability projects come from the savings account and those specific projects are identified later. So for example, zero waste or building reach codes, those types of projects would be up for consideration in the next stage when we get to the actual projects. But this is just simply the savings account.
Go ahead. No, it's yours, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just going to say for transparency purposes, can we just add the word "fund" to the end of it so people aren't confused by the tiering?
Yes.
Thank you. No problem.
On the streets and sidewalks, and again, this is sort of going between the CIP and also priorities, but the downtown parking utility underground, can we make that a citywide plan for undergrounding rather than, in other words, I think that rather than looking specifically at downtown, we should take a look at the entire city and see where is the greatest need. I've been hearing in Bellhaven that there's some issues with the possibility of undergrounding there and just, I have no idea where the greatest need is, but just thought it might make sense to look citywide.
Okay, so it may be helpful if we can just do a little check-in on the number of questions that you may have, the level of detail, because what we're, and we're happy to go through.
I have two more.
Two more? Okay, yeah, yeah. That, which is helpful because if it was going to be all 80 of them, then that'd be a different story. So with, I think for purposes of tonight, I think what we mainly just need to do is get some general direction from you, especially, I think what we're asking for in actual kind of action, it relates to the tiering. There may be other comments that are very helpful for us as we then prepare the CIP budget for this upcoming year. So even going back to the last one about the, the nomenclature, we can definitely, if we get direction from you that we're going to change the, the name of the project, it may or may not actually have the word "fund" in it because that will, could create some other confusion with some other things. So as long as we're getting direction tonight that we're going to change the name, we can come back with that. So specific to the underground utilities, one thing that's not in front of you tonight is the full CIP book with the descriptions of things and everything like that. So if, if the guidance tonight is to broaden, broaden it, we need to be careful sometimes whether we should be creating a separate project, broadening it so the exact solution, I'm not sure that we'll come up with tonight, but we, you can give us that general direction and we can figure out the best way of achieving that. But we just want to make sure it's the consensus of the entire council and not just individual council members. Otherwise, that would be a lot of work that may not be reflected of the full council.
And I've never gone through this before, so I'm just, please do direct, steer me.
Yeah, mine's also, the only thing I'd add is that with the undergrounding, so it's been just historically that councils wanted to encourage the undergrounding as much as possible. And one of the issues is that there's a trade-off between what the city pays for and what PG&E pays for and the timing of that. PG&E has a program where they do the undergrounding, but the question has to do with their willingness to do it and when they do that and how long we're in line. So, so, but I think it's, I certainly, I mean, I think there was a time when Councilmember Carlton on the phone wanted to bring in fiber and we were trying to figure out if there was a way to bring fiber to the downtown. But I don't, if we changed the tier from tier two to tier one, what effect would that have? On this, or did you want?
I wasn't changing the.
Oh, you don't want?
I didn't want to change the tier. I'm just concerned that we look citywide as opposed to more specifically.
Okay, I withdraw my question then.
Can I, can I contribute here? I think Justin's point is that we want to be careful not to re-scope projects tonight, but we will certainly do that during the CIP process.
That's great. Thank you. One that does have a possible implication, but, is the Welcome to Menlo Park Monument signs, which I understand we just moved from tier three to tier two, but when I look at all of the different projects, it does, to me, it's not something that is more important than other projects that we are doing. And so I want to check in with others and see whether I would move that back down at least.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to have them, but actually if it's a trade-off for me personally, if it's a trade-off to other projects, then it can drop for me. We have so much going on. Councilmember Combs?
I mean, so I, I, that wouldn't have my support. I like the signs. I mean, it's one of those questions of when do you have money for art, right? It's like you can always, there can always be a, a more utilitarian usage for money in all cases. And so I, I like them. I think they go to sort of just an aesthetic value that, that has value. And so that, and so I wouldn't be interested in, in lowering the tiering for, for the monument signs.
What's the net effect on, so I mean, the big question is what's the net effect on staff time, whether as a result of it's a tier three or a tier two for the monument? I mean, we might just be arguing about peanuts.
Let's see, so this is one where we may want to actually, if I'm going back in time to the goal-setting session that was here on the Saturday, I seem to recall that there's a greater interest, not, what was scoped out previously was five monument signs, many of which would be in Caltrans right-of-way, which is an extensive process. What I heard at the goal-setting session is there may be an interest in signage that could be done differently. Would, we wouldn't maybe need to focus on some of the Caltrans right-of-way, that would simplify things. So I think it'd be a matter of through this spring, if we can kind of revisit what the scope is, that will then indicate what we could accomplish. And so if through what was recommended tonight in terms of what we understood to be the guidance from the goal-setting was to move it from three to two, we could at least be spending some time to re-scope it so that it is something that could be achievable. But if it's in the, if the focus remains with Caltrans, that's going to be a, a longer-term process.
All right. For the purpose of discussion tonight, I am with, I am recusing myself from anything related to the parking structure as we did, as I did at the goal-setting meeting that we all had. So if you all want to discuss that, I need to step outside before that portion or component of it. Only, only because as a general matter, I work in proximity to one of the lots now. But if we actually started to hone in on what we were doing, it maybe I could come back in for the discussion. But for the goal-setting, I need to recuse.
Well, I actually did want to, I had a couple of questions around the.
All right, I'll walk out.
Parking structure.
Actually, I have one more.
Don't go, Stan.
Sorry, one last CIP item, and that was just, and this is purely professional staff decision, just it surprised, in looking at it again, the Dunbarton Rail Corridor planning support is tier three. Should that be a higher tier, given all the effort that's going on right now?
Some of that approach had to do from when another agency is, what's driving a process is much different than when the city's in a project management lead. So I think, and again, it's within the overall transportation spectrum. We could put all of our transportation projects as, as tier one. I think that was just meant to be a relative importance across the entire transportation band.
Okay, just having gone to the meeting last Saturday where there's a tremendous effort within the next few months, I just want to make sure that the city has adequate resourcing there.
Yeah. And I guess along those lines, it may just be that if there's a, if that catapults to like very, very high priority for the council, we kind of would need to hear that and make, make adjustments. But we're, we understand that they're, they're, they're going through the, the process, but if, if it becomes paramount to council, we would need to hear that and potentially realign some things.
But I mean, us saying it's paramount doesn't mean there's actually work for you to do if you're not the lead agency.
You, there, there is a dynamic in terms of how proactive the city wants to be. Yeah, so there is, there's different ways of approaching things, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on this issue? No? Okay, I'll step out for the next part.
I think I was the one who wanted to talk about it. So my question was, was that I see that like it's been moved from tier two to tier three, and, but based on the goal-setting session, it was, so only four council members are able to participate. And it didn't have a majority of votes to actually be prioritized at all. So I'm not clear why it's on here, given that it isn't, it doesn't have, as, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't have three votes.
So the document that's before the council is the city council's adopted budget. And this project was approved by the city council several years ago? Yeah, several years ago. What you see in the capital improvement budget is carryover money that was previously set aside by council. So staff does not have the authority to unilaterally defund projects. That would be an action the council would need to take in order for it to fall off of this list. So it's there until the council tells us to take it off.
So even if there is, so things stay on the list forever unless they're voted off the island, essentially? I'm trying to get sort of how-
There are instances where projects just may go stale and staff may recommend to the city council that we defund the project and re-appropriate those funds for another purpose that the council has identified. But at least to my knowledge, because we haven't gone through this capital improvement program budget process, we haven't had that conversation with the council.
So as I'm understanding it, you're saying that, that as part of this, I just want to make sure, because like you're going to ask me to vote on this as part of a collection of prioritizations, but it doesn't have my support. And what you're saying is that, and it doesn't have a majority support of the council, as I understand it. But what you're saying is that it has to have a majority of people willing to vote it off for it to actually, actually be voted off or for it to be deprioritized.
I think the council could act tonight to defund the existing project, and that would make it very clear that it's not a priority.
But that would need, that would need three votes.
Yes, it would.
So, but for it to continue, it doesn't need three votes.
Because it's already received at least three votes.
Okay.
By a prior council, but yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I was just going to follow up and say, I was going to discuss it more in the work plan, but I would be happy to vote to defund it.
Can I make the suggestion, just for the interest of transparency on this item, excluding the lot for which I'm conflicted, that if you guys wanted to vote to defund it, that it be brought as a, that it be brought actually as an agenda item, just because there are stakeholders in the community who are going to want to be part of that conversation. So that would be what I would suggest, is that it be brought back as an item on a council agenda for transparent discussion about it. And the request has been made. And excluding the lot for which I have the conflict, happy to put it onto the agenda and actually probably at that time would have, we'll have to figure out with Bill how in the heck I can participate for the areas I can and for what I can't. Mayor Protem Taylor would go ahead and do that, so perfectly fine. So, any other, does that work? Great. Councilmember Carlton, did you have anything you wanted to talk about with respect to the CIP?
With respect to the CIP, no. I have some questions about some of the items specifically. Would you like me to address those at this time?
I think we're gonna, I think we have, before that, I think we're going to wrap up the CIP and then move to the next. So we're just going to keep buttoning up items and then move on. So Mr. Figueroa, what exactly motion would you like made here?
We're requesting the city council approve the prioritization of capital improvement projects as presented in the staff report for this evening's agenda item.
Does anyone have a, can anyone make the motion? Councilmember Carlton?
May I make a question? I do have a question about things in the CIP. Is it time to ask that?
So the, yeah, I mean, you can ask, but what staff has made clear, and I think what's fair, is that tonight really is about the tiering of the CIP. If we were going to get into discussions about actual broadening of scope or scope-specific questions, that that could, would come up during the CIP review or as a separate agenda item. But they're just trying to figure out their work plan right now as to what exists in the CIP.
Okay. I was just going to ask about furniture replacement, which I don't believe there's anyone, well, very few people in the community that would like to input on that, but we can take that up later. Also, I wanted to point out, before this is published, there's a typo that says future funding means, in quotes, unfunded on all of the documents. And maybe before we publish that, it should be needs, N-E-E-D-S.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion for that. Well, let's-
And then the chargers, I'm a big advocate for the EV chargers. You know, we're trying very hard to hit our targets for greenhouse gas reduction. We're trying to encourage people to buy electric cars, and I feel like that's a really strong area that we can get funding that's available now to make it happen. And I also see that it's one of the things that's actually funded this year in the environmental quality group. And I don't know how you feel about moving it to tier one.
Whether the EV charging station should move to tier one, is there, so I guess the question is be, what's the specific project that the CIP entry is denoting?
Sure. So with that, there's money that's already been funded and then there's a future year fund. So the money that's already been funded, a good chunk of it's already been spent. So we were able to add EV chargers in the city hall parking lot to, for our new fleet of plug-in hybrids. So part of the money's already been spent. And I think the next round of money is to be spent at the corp yard as we deal with the expanding our EV fleet. And so what we need to do beyond this is actually identify the additional locations. I think that's what we're looking for in potential funding in 1920, are the additional locations. And it's not so much the chargers themselves, it's the, it's getting the electric, electricity capacity and the conduits to the appropriate locations. So we do have plans in place and, so I think it's a, it's listed as tier two, but it's one of our higher priorities. It's just relative to the other-
That's kind of my point.
Excuse me?
That's kind of my point. It is something we're moving forward on, and I know it's something that we all want to get done, and it seems misleading to say it's tier one, when I think our intent is to get it done this year.
So I think the difficulty, Kat, that I'm hearing is that the, that the specific project that's next isn't identified yet and that, but when that project is identified, that they would go ahead and tier one, it'd be, it'd be done. That their, that their intention is to do it right of way, but that they have projects that are identified right now that they're classifying as tier one. Is that, is that okay or?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it means to staff. What he's saying has got done is we just need to put them in the proper to put them. And if it's tier one, we would put them in the proper to put them. If it's not, we might not.
So similar to, so similar to this, a couple other tier-two projects, there's intention to get those done this year. They're just saying that, that there's immediacy work in the document to say that something is tier one, whereas they just haven't identified the project or the funding stream yet, but the intent is to keep implementing the EV charger plan. So they have it designated down as tier two. It is a, it is a-
Okay, so we have $400,000 in dependence for it in 2019, 2020.
I'm sorry, Kat, I didn't understand that.
It said we have $400,000 listed in it for 2019, 200, sorry, 1920, for this year.
Did you want to explain that again?
Yeah, it's across, within, just to take a quick step back in terms of the various categories. So within environment, there's one, two, three, four, five of those five projects. The two that we place the highest priority on are the ones where there's carryover money and there's, those are things that we're trying to wrap up. Then tier two were things that we're working on, and tier three is something that we haven't started. So the one, two, three tiering is just relative, and that's where, based off where we've, what we've already accomplished with the EV chargers and the fact that we still need to identify the next location, that's where, for our recommendation, it landed in tier two.
Okay. Is that-
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kat. Appreciate, so you're good, Kat?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Protem Taylor?
I have a quick question. The Pierce Road sidewalk and the Sammataill Drive bike route installation is in one project?
Yes, that was a grant application. And so that's how, that's how that gets packaged together.
Okay, and so-
That may be, that may be implemented. What we still need to figure, what we, step one is we need, we've got three vacancies. We need to fill those vacancies. If we can fill those vacancies, we can implement projects. How we actually deliver that project will depend. It could go out as one bid package, it could go out as three different bid packages. The fastest that we can get things done will be in the most, you know, smartest, most cost-effective way. So I don't know exactly how we'll deliver that one.
Okay, and just going back to the statement you just made to Councilmember Carlton, so regardless if it's a tier one or a tier two, doesn't really matter, especially if you have the grant funding, you just need to have, hire an engineer for the city to push the project through.
That's a big just.
Put it out there, it'll come.
But I did want to suggest, and I've talked with Mr. Jerome Robinson, that, I got to figure, I don't know you, I can't call you manager Jerome Robinson, so I just got to say Mr. Robinson, that in the, if there comes opportunity for, for projects like that to use outside engineering, if we're really having a hard time, I don't know what the cost efficiency of that is, but, and it's not a discussion for tonight, but I don't think this council could be wrong, and I guess it's going to come back what the cost estimate is, but I don't think we're necessarily predisposed to being opposed to that, so.
That's good to know. And most every project we deliver has outside engineering, so it's a matter of being able to manage that project. But if there's a way to bring in additional resources, we're happy to try to find that.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, I did, I think we had a motion on the CIP. And did we have a motion in a second? No. So I need a motion on the CIP. Come on, guys, I need, I need assistance.
I moved to, moved forward with CIP.
One minute.
All right, there's a second. Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Mr. Figueroa, back to you.
The next group of projects, as we discussed last week, are projects that were added to the city council work plan for 2018 that were subsequently funded in the 2018-19 budget. The first group of projects that you see here are budgeted in the, in the capital improvement program budget. We just went through the process of tiering and prioritizing those projects. So the recommendation would be that they not appear on the city council's formal work plan document because they are in the capital improvement budget. The next group are two projects that could be transferred to, or have been transferred to already existing master planning processes. The first is the Burgess Snack Shack, which is in the Parks and Rec master plan process as well, and then the El Camino Real Corridor Study, which is in the transportation master plan process. And then finally, high-speed rail coordination was a priority in the previous year's work plan, and that has been funded or transferred to operation. So we're just seeking city council consensus that this, that these transfers are acceptable. However, there's no formal action required.
So the Snack Shack, you guys weren't here for that, but that was a project that came forward when the Foster Srees closed. We had a bunch of people come forward in the city who are interested in trying to fund the expansion of the snack bar in Burgess Park. It was, we had an architect, Mr. Senate, give his services free for that. The actual designs were blessed by the Park and Rec Commission. They looked at it, and then the Historical Society looked at it and blessed that project. And then ran into some, some design issues with the undergrounding of utilities. And then the Park and Rec master plan process began, and in, in recognition of that process taking place, decided to wait for that to be done. And so I'm, I think it's perfectly appropriate to put that into the Park and Rec master plan process, as that's frankly what it's been waiting on. So that's my only input on the rest of this I'm fine with. Councilmember Nash?
What did we decide to do? Basically, I was going to recommend we take off the plan of downtown parking structure, but I think, did we just have that discussion and it'll come back through the CIP? Okay. As a separate, right, as a separate item. And then monument signs, we've had the discussion.
Yeah, just to, as a reminder, we are trying this year to clean up the several different documents where all of these items resided. We just wanted to be transparent that they were on the council's work plan for 2018 and they're not disappearing. They're going into a very specific sort of workflow.
That's right. But the items you've talked about, we've identified and we've got it figured, it'll come back, so. All right. We don't need to vote on these? Good. So next.
The next, the next group of topics were addressed and raised at the goal-setting session on February 2nd. They are, as you could see, three items that range from very broad on affordable housing to something very specific such as the energy reach codes and carbon policy. Staff is recommending that while we, because we don't have a full project scope for any of these items, what exactly was, is envisioned and how will that be resourced over the coming year, we're recommending the city council direct or refer these items to the appropriate advisory committee to develop the project on a page and return to council for consideration of future prioritization, integration into the prioritization process.
So do you guys have comments? I do, but I, so, yeah, let me, so I, all of these things I think are, so all these things are important to me personally. The middle to all of especially, I'm really looking forward to hearing their input on that. The, I mean, our job is to explain to staff what we're hearing, and what I'm hearing from people is that the speeds on middle are rising, not slowing down. And there is quite a bit of concern about the speeds that are being reached on that street right now. So I'm very interested in looking at that, at that at council, and can't wait for that to get back from the commission. And then the other two items are incredibly important as well, so, and we're going to need them, because I believe within our work, I believe within, well, I guess we're going to talk about that later, but I thought within the work plan that there is potential for review of the specific plan this year. And so the affordable housing component is important to that review. And so, the affordable housing component is important to that review. And then the energy reach codes and carbon policy, we've had people come and touch upon that to us and what that means, but I think we need to really have that fleshed out and understand it, but it's certainly something that, uh, I'd like to be looking at as soon as we can, so. Any other comments? No. Councilmember Nash.
I just want to second what council, what Mayor Mueller just said, and especially it seems like one of the easiest pieces possibly, from what I've heard from other people, is the energy reach codes, which are incredibly important, and especially to get into our, zoning and basically for new developments. So, any way we could push that forward if it means pulling it out. It actually was one of the things that I was going to pull out as a top tier, but perhaps it needs more fleshing out first.
So, with the City Council's guidance this evening, we will advise the liaisons to these committees to express to the chair that this needs to be, that these topics need to be added to their next agenda to develop a project scope. At this time, we don't have a clear understanding of what all's involved with these projects, and then we could come back to council and, with the appropriate resources necessary identified, should the council decide to move forward with those.
Great. Councilmember Carlton, did you have anything to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Do you need anything from us further than that?
I probably would be helpful for the council just to direct the commissions to take up these issues and return as soon as possible with a project on a page.
Can we direct that by acclamation?
Yes.
I think, does anyone object to that? It's, it's so, so acclimated. All right.
The next group of projects are...
So acclaimed. That's the word.
The next group of projects were discussed, they existed on the 2018 City Council work plan. Majority of the, of the items listed here were in the 2018 work plan, and then there was one additional item that was added as part of the goal-setting session in February, in, on February 2nd. For a very similar purpose to what we just discussed with the, those three projects seeking the commissions to help define scope. With these particular projects, it is, staff's somewhat unclear as to exactly what the council would like to see, so we're proposing that work, study sessions be scheduled. You'll have, you see there, we've proposed tentative dates. The study session calendar is rather full for the next couple of months here. One comment that was raised at the last council meeting was a request to have a study session on, from the mayor, on chronic homelessness, and that is on the tentative agenda for March 12th, so next week, we are bringing a study session. That was not on the original presentation, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose sight of that. What we're recommending from, we're asking council for direction tonight is general consensus on sort of the prioritization of these study sessions. And then, secondly, I think it would be very helpful to staff if the council identified subcommittees to work with us to ensure that we're returning with information that is responsive to the council's general direction.
So, I just have one comment to add. In discussion with Mayor Pro-Tim Taylor in light of current events with the Ravenswood School District, would like to just change the title to that study session from June 18th, 2019, to Equity and Education Study Session. Reason being is that there's, um, there's a, a potential opportunity, and we're not gonna say we're committed to it yet, but it's something that we'd like to have explored that hasn't really been to, to explore, so, because we don't, I don't want people to think in our, and in, that we're absolutely pushing this yet, but, um, whether or not it's appropriate, since there, Ravenswood is without a superintendent, to look at the Sequoia Union High School District absorbing the district and creating a K through 12 district. It seems that for years, um, the success rate of going into high school and also graduate, and also graduation rates from high school at performance levels has been an issue, and it may be that perhaps a K through 12 district with Sequoia's resources might be able to help address that, and also provide some stability to the district. So, not saying we are fully committed, we want to engage with our stakeholders in East Palo Alto, and have had some preliminary discussions with stakeholders in East Palo Alto around that. The idea would be that we would study this with the East Palo Alto City Council and, and then, and have some discussions with Ravenswood about it, and then see, as two cities, how we would want that addressed. So. Mayor Pro-Tim Taylor.
Thank you. One piece I'd like to add is also including the Ravenswood School District, that's in Menlo Park as well, in that discussion, and I'm not sure who that would be, if it was a teacher at the school, at Willow, or at Bellhaven Elementary School. I'm not sure which schools, the Life Moves Facility, if they go to Willow, or if they go to Bellhaven Elementary School, but also to include Menlo Park in that as well.
There's a lot of, a lot of work to be done before that study session, so I think June is a great place to do it, 'cause there's funding mechanisms that we have to talk about with the county, we gotta talk with the superintendent of school, we gotta talk to Ravenswood, there's a lot of pieces to be put together for our council to really dive in and study that, but I think the, I just think it's time we had that discussion, so. Does the rest of, and on the chronic homeless study session that's coming next week, the impetus for that is that we have a, a growing chronic homeless population downtown that is refusing services, and talking with our police department and our service providers. Since San Francisco right now, they're doing, they're actually working to provide wraparound services with counseling, actually on the street, and some very innovative ways to try to move people into, into supportive housing. And seeing if we can, in combination with the county and our service providers, do a little bit more to address the situation, because we have our, we have, I'm gonna call out Frank, she's so wonderful. Frandy, the Chamber of Commerce has actually been in a position where she's been called out, and she has personally cleaned up, uh, waste, and there's public health issues, both for the general public, but also for chronic homeless population. So how do we deal this in the most compassionate way that we can, but taking into account the very best practices around us? And I just, we've reached that point, and I think it's time to have that conversation. So, if you guys are all minimal to that, the 12th would be when we do that. Does anyone have any other comments on the work plan?
I think that sounds great, thank you, Ray.
Yeah. Mayor Pro-Tim Taylor.
Thank you. I actually have two comments, one on the chronic homelessness, that this is great that we will be doing a study session on it. There's also a population that I believe is on Tarleton properties on Bayfront that needs to be addressed as well, included in this.
Absolutely.
And I, I didn't know if we were done with homelessness, but I also had a few other things as far as the study session work plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, this leads into, there are three that I would like to see on there, and I know that we're dealing with chronic homelessness, but I'd also like to see a study session on housing. There's some other issues in Menlo Park, and the temporary location only scratches the surface. The second is, and I brought this up, I think we talked about it at the last goal-setting on the, the second briefly, and that's to have a Bellhaven Neighborhood Study Session. And I'd like to see that happen sooner than later. The third is, and I believe that this is already on the, on the table to be done, but I'd like to see a study session on Connect Menlo. There's some issues around that as far as how the community is feeling about the level of engagement there, and then also how the information was presented to the community. I actually have four items. The fourth is, the request was to create specifically a Bellhaven Amvenues Fund, not a public amenities fund, so I would like to see that changed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, yeah, Councilmember Nash.
Without going into much detail, could you give any update about the, update the Charter City Initiative? I'm just wondering if, given all the other projects, all the other study sessions, whether that one is, makes sense at this time?
So, my recollection of Charter City was that, when we went through the analysis, it was that it may not have been, uh, we probably needed to wait till the 2020 census if we were gonna be, if we were gonna really best, best move forward on that issue. So, I am, I would be inclined to stakeholders in the community who want to have that discussion, not saying we're not gonna have it, but I think that for the best use of staff resources to do, to, to wait until the 2020 census was completed might make the most sense. Any, any, Councilmember Carlton? Do you have an opinion on that?
Well?
Do you have an opinion on whether we can, on the Charter City Initiative study session, if it might be appropriate to wait until 2020 after the census was done?
Yeah, that makes a lot more...
Okay.
...more sense to me. That's, I was fine.
Um, so I'm fine, that's great, so, I think, every, Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I would just be, uh, I would just prefer a situation where it came back before council on when it would be, like, whether we actually want a study session or not. So, I like this idea of, let's delay it to the 2020 census, but I don't necessarily want it to be something that staff actively starts working on at some point in the future, unless they get specific direction from council.
All right, so why don't we revisit this for the goal-setting for, in 2020? So, Councilmember Nash.
The other question I have is, well, first of all, I'd like to see one, a study session on a sunshine ordinance or some sort of...
So, we were just gonna bring that, oh, actually, were we gonna do a study session? I thought we were just gonna, we can do a study session, that's fine. I was just, thought we were just bring it. Yeah. So, you guys are fine with us just bringing a, okay, so we'll just, if that's all right, we'll just bring one that we fleshed out with the city attorney and staff, and then if you guys want to modify it, we can. Everyone shaking their head, yes? Great, okay.
And then another one is, I'd like to do some sort of study session on development caps and where we are, and for both commercial and residential, and the impacts and fully mitigated.
So, I think that would be included in the specific plan review, so if you want to...
And the downtown specific plan.
Yeah, so the downtown specific plan review, if you want to talk about development caps, that'd be something that we could include in the discussion there. And then, if we're doing a connect, I don't know, I don't believe a Connect Menlo review is a, it is a view this year, so we can have that in that, that discussion, in that review as well.
And then final, finally, I'm wondering, given all the other priorities, whether updating the City Council Procedures Manual should perhaps fall further down on the calendar?
I don't have any problem moving that all the way to, I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem. Bill, do you have an issue with us waiting? I don't, actually, guys, do we need to have a study session on that? No? Councilmember Carlton, do you care if we have a study session on the City Council's Procedure Manual?
No, I don't.
All right, so, well, let's just take that off the list. Great. That's gone. All right. With respect to housing, I'm totally fine having a study session on that, but can we, we need to sit down and figure out a scope, and that, so that, 'cause that can go, so, is there a specific portion of it, like, 'cause we just sent affordable housing component to the Housing Commission, which will come to us as an item, we can also go over, I mean, so, for, I mean, study sessions are for us to become educated on a topic and ask questions, so if we want to go ahead and go over affordable housing and for both, for all the different tiers, and, or is there some specific component you want to talk about?
I think it goes deeper than that. I'm just thinking about what the housing need is in the city of Menlo Park, as opposed to a regional issue. And then also, I would love to have our new Deputy Director of Community Development weigh in, Ms. Rhonda, that was just hired and started yesterday. Her background is in housing. She had a lot of input during our subcommittee meeting, and I, even wraparound service for homelessness, I think she has input on. So I just would like to see...
Okay, so we'll get her integrated into the wraparound services for homeless for the 12th, and then, um, why don't we go ahead and have, who wants to point, in terms of what you're thinking of in study session, if you wanna, I'm fine to have a study session on housing, and if you want to go ahead and work with her and another council member to scope that out, that's fine, we'll just set aside, and then, and, does anyone have an inclination to want to do it, or we'll just, to do it with Mayor Pro-Tim Taylor? Should we just let you guys brown act into it as we go?
I'm open either way.
Are we talking about a subcommittee to scope out housing?
No, it's a, it's a, just an ad hoc committee to sort of, to help scope out the housing, to hope out, to help scope out the housing study session. It's not a, it's not a standing committee, it's not, there's not a specific, it's just specifically just to meet with the new housing, uh, it's, I'm sorry. Housing czar, no, no, there's discussion taking place, I'm trying to, no, it's okay.
Oh, pardon.
No, no, so, anyway, we're gonna, I'm just, well, it's gracefully, we'll leave it in your court, and I'm totally fine with working with staff, and just get, let me know a date, and happy to, happy to do that. The Bellhaven Neighborhood Study Session, we are gonna have a Bellhaven meeting, we can, we can talk about, we can have a study session before then. I'm not sure how to scope, how to necessarily scope what specific issue in Bellhaven for that.
There's some direction with six letters that were submitted on CCIN for the first goal-setting on February 2nd, and then also again for last Tuesday, to get an idea of direction, and I'm not sure if each council member's had an opportunity to read them, but that's one of the reasons why it came up on February 2nd, and so, I'm bringing it up again.
Yeah, so, but for a study session, we have to, I have to be able to turn to staff and say, "I want you to work on this issue related to," so it'd be, "I need you to work on this issue related to this neighborhood," or "these multiple issues related to this neighborhood," like, 'cause we gotta have a, I get, they have to have the fair warning of what the work product is gonna be for us all to dive into. So, happy to do it, I just, I want to be fair to staff and preparation for it, what their, what specific issues to dive in. Mr. Jerome Robinson?
Well, if the mayor and the council's generally happy to have that study session, then maybe staff can work with the Mayor Pro-Tim, and we'll scope it out and bring it back.
Perfect. Go forth and do good.
Thank you.
So, uh, so let's just go ahead and pick a, so just go ahead and pick a date within the calendar, and it's fine. That's good with everyone? All right. Connect Menlo is going to come with to us as a normal, as a normal council meeting item, so, um, we'll have a full, robust discussion about that. Any other items that people want to see as study sessions we have not discussed? Councilmember Nash?
I don't have a clear idea, but I'm just wondering from our earlier meeting about an emergency, um, some sort of getting the council and the police department, fire department somehow getting some sort of coordination there.
So, the liaisons, what we, what I, the other liaisons are gonna sit down and meet, scope that out, and then potentially go ahead and present something to us. I don't think we necessarily need a study session, hopefully just come wrapped in a bow. So, good. Okay. Any other items? Do you have what you need?
Uh, there, there was a request to change the title on the creation of a Bellhaven's Amvenues Fund, that narrows the, that narrows the topic, is like the council's guidance there.
I cannot remember, I, something, my hesitancy there is, I think that I remember during the, the coffee cart. The Coffee Cart Planning Commission issue, that there was discussion about whether or not there would be, that somehow a discussion around the public amenities fund came up, and I remember that night, and I swear, I can remember Peter, I'm pretty sure Peter raised it, and I'm, I can't remember the complete context, but the idea was that within the specific plan discussion, there was also a discussion of a public amenities fund, and that in circumstances, when we were looking at something like a coffee cart, maybe it made more sense to make, to put money into a pooled public amenities fund. So, I think, and I understand, because the idea of the public amenities fund did not, my memory of it is that it wasn't, Connect Menlo wasn't the first time it came up. It was something that was, something that discussed in the specific plan, and then we applied that principle to Connect Menlo as well, and there should be two, and then there was the discussion of, it's now coming back to me, that we want to make sure that when we have the public amenities fund for issues coming out of Connect Menlo, that it was dedicated to Bellhaven, and there was definitely council direction on that, I remember that. So, so, maybe in creation of a public amenities fund, we'll have two prongs in that study session? Does that make sense? Great, excellent.
I have a, a comment. From my understanding is that the, well, a couple of conversations, one with former Mayor Motaki, is that the hotel tax, some, a portion of that can go into the Bellhaven amenities fund, and a part of that he brought up, which I didn't necessarily agree with, is creating that to deal with the inequity in education, because that's been an issue for multiple decades. That was one piece of it. The other is that during Connect Menlo, it, it was repeatedly stated by, and I can't remember if it was the consultants, but an amenities fund kept coming up, and so, and it was referred to as a Bellhaven amenities fund. And so, there's been an expectation from community that that existed, and so, when we went back, and I believe it was, I approached Nick about it a few years ago, and asked to look for it in, I don't know if it was the Connect Menlo or Facebook Expansion, EIR, but we looked for it, but there was nothing in there. And so, there's been a, a search. And so, and my whole piece was, okay, well, why not create it? And it was brought up at last goal setting, it was brought up several times at the Finance and Audit Committee, and so, I'm bringing it up again.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense, so we'll go back and have that study session. Did we create a public amenities fund for this, for the specific plan area already?
There, there was a, and I forget, perhaps Bill remembers the trigger, but there, there was funding triggered by the downtown specific plan for parking-related issues, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think there is amenities fund, because I remember it came up during the coffee cart discussion.
But didn't Green, the Greenheart Development wasn't part of their public, going into public bonus was a, a certain dollar figure that they were promising to the city? Mark's gonna correct me.
Good evening, Mark Munzer, Community Development Director. I'll do my best with it, because we're drafting the report for your review next Tuesday on the specific plan. But there was a amenities fund that was included as part of the adoption of the specific plan. We have received a payment in the first half of the payment in from Station 1300, and we'll report back exactly what that fund balance is on Tuesday. It is my understanding that when that, that fund was created, the idea was for infrastructure-related needs in the specific plan area, but I will be quite honest with you, that we are wrapping that up now to see how we will, will report that out on Tuesday.
Okay, so that being the case, then, the creation of a Bellhaven amenities fund is probably, we already have a, a public amenities fund for the specific plan? Or do you want to have a discussion, the staff want to have a discussion about both?
Well, the Connect Menlo review is actually the following meeting, so it'll be March 26th. So, we can have a discussion on March 26th about the community amenities list, and the way that that was developed during Connect Menlo, and the current list that exists right now, and the appraisal process that was just adopted and created, that developments in Connect Menlo will have to adhere to when they have bonus level development, and that will create a community amenities value. And then there's a list that is adopted as part of a resolution in connection with Connect Menlo that primarily relates to amenities in the Bellhaven neighborhood, but we will bring that list with us on the 26th.
All right, so, hearing that, that it's gonna be covered, do we, do we still want to have the studies, the study session isn't scheduled till August, and it sounds like we're gonna be doing this a lot sooner?
Correct. Specific plan on March 12th, and Connect Menlo on March 26th.
All right, so... Is it all right if we go ahead and for now, if you're not satisfied with it, you can, I mean, guys, you know this, and I already told you, if you're not satisfied with something and you want to have another study session on it, just come to me. I'm not, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be rigid with our council calendar. So, if you're not satisfied with the, after we have the discussion and you want to have a further study session on it, just let me know, and we'll sit down with staff and figure it out. Is that worth it?
It, I know for sure it'll come up, because community has asked, and then as far as the, the list of amenities, one of the reasons why I'm asking for a study session on Connect Menlo is because a lot of those amenities were more about the stakeholders' needs and not about the community's needs. So, what the community was asking for got watered down by the number of stakeholders that attended.
Understood, and so we'll bring the list and be prepared to have that conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Okay, so, we'll hold off then on the August discussion. And Councilmember Nash?
Can we please publicize the study session dates as soon as possible, even if it says tentative, just so people can know about them and be aware, especially these two coming up?
Okay, we're making good progress here. We only have two more pages left on this list. 2019 top priorities recommended.
So, to help get the discussion going, staff met to review the, there were about 14 projects that were presented to the council on the second as potential projects for the 2019 work plan, from which the council, council could identify top priorities. So, staff met and identified the five that are here. If you go to the next page, you'll see the balance of the priorities. So, now's the opportunity for the council to narrow down the top priorities. Just as a reminder, we will make all, progress on all projects on the 14, on the, on the list, including those that are not determined or designated as top priorities. Top priorities help staff focus when resources are, are tight, whether it be time or staff availability due to vacancies. We will rearrange strategically resources to ensure that we fulfill the commitments that were made on the project on a page for the top priorities first, and then, as time is available, move back to, remove resources back to the other priorities that, or the other projects that are on the work plan. So, we're not, unless the council instructs us to remove one of the projects, then that would mean that we would not do anything, but the intent here is to deliver what was identified in the project on a page included in the packet for each project.
Okay. Any, any comments or amendments? Councilmember Combs?
So, is this regarding the top five or the whole, the whole list?
So, in the staff report, there was a process outlined that if, if I remember correctly off the top of my head, the mayor could choose to call for a motion to approve the, the top priorities as they are. If that does not, if that call fails to receive the necessary actions, then this next step could be that you go one by one down the list.
We're just talking about the top five right now.
Okay. Yeah, I have no, no questions about the top five.
All right. Any other concerns about the top five? Councilmember Nash?
So, I think that the 14, well, actually, first of all, I guess the first question is grade crossing, seems like it's missing from this list.
So, the, the action the council took this evening is what staff needs to move forward with that project, and that project will continue to receive the resources necessary, but it does not need to be on the work plan for the coming year.
There's gonna be money that has to come down from the state, and there's, I mean...
I'm really puzzled.
Ms. Nagaya, you want, yeah, I think...
As Nikki's coming up, I think, from the staff perspective, we want to make sure that we're able to put some resources towards the Middle Avenue pedestrian and bicycle rail crossing. And, and so, we believe that we can work on both of those projects.
I totally agree with that, and am thrilled that we made the decision that we did and are moving ahead and can focus on the Middle Avenue. I just thought that if we were expending resources, that it should appear here. Not that it, and your staff, anyway.
So, I, I think our point is, we know that these, these projects are the council's top priorities, and we're gonna try, we'll work on all of them as best we can. The top five, we'll work on steadily, we're, and I think Nikki can really address this question. We are at a point of slight pause on the Ravenswood Crossing, and she can explain that.
Right, so, Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director. So, essentially, the action you took earlier this evening on the Ravenswood Railroad Crossing study gets us to a point where we've, will be set up to complete the, this, this current phase. So, it's adoption of the project study report. We have outstanding requests for additional work from, from the council that we talked about in your last study session in January. We have some homework to do with the rail subcommittee to, I think, get that to a point where we're ready to bring back that additional scope, but we think that's a number of, of months away. April would be kind of the soonest we're targeting to bring that back to the, the full council. And so, once we have a discussion about that additional scope of work and that level of effort, I think we'll be better poised to continue to look for, for funding and the next steps on the, the overall project as a whole. So, I think there's, there's some level of effort that we need to pursue for that project, but as Starla mentioned, we're, we're really targeting the next few months focusing in on the middle crossing in order to also get that grant done, because we, those two projects have, quite frankly, lingered for so long that we don't want to lose the, the grant funding.
Fully support that. Okay. All right. I guess my other comment is that to me, the, let's see, let me quickly pull this up again, the Chillicothe Street Improvement and Heritage Tree Ordinance are two things which definitely need to be done, but to me, they're not really top five priorities, whereas I would put the develop and implement near-term downtown parking, and I would put end access strategies as a, really a top priority, and also the El Camino Downtown Specific Plan update. I don't know if it's how much of a discussion it's worth to move them from, as long as they're all in the four, in the 14, but to me, those are more five, top five than the other two.
So, I'm gonna speak on, on behalf of Chillicothe. I went and, I went and looked at Chillicothe with Mayor Protem Taylor, and given its proximity to the school there and the amount of traffic that is coming through there, I don't think it can wait, it really, yeah.
But I thought that these were all 14 moving ahead, so to me, that just seems more like...
But the thing is, the thing is that, so, so, to some extent, this is a document where we say, where we say, these projects, by the end of the year, there's an expectation that it's gonna be wrapped in a bow, or it's gonna be done. And so, like, the Chillicothe Street Improvement Project, by the end of the year, it's like, all right, this sucker's gonna be as close to done as possible, right? And I think that that, given what I saw with Mayor Protem Taylor, I support that needs, that has that level of priority. The Middle Avenue pedestrian bicycle crossing, it wouldn't be done, but it would be wrapped in a bow for a grant. We'd know exactly what we were looking at. Heritage Tree Ordinance, gosh, I hope it's done. The Bellhaven Branch Library, like, that would, obviously, it's not gonna be constructed, but we are gonna have a good idea of what that looks like. And I think that's what, frankly, really hurt the library project the last year, is we still don't know what that really looks like, like, we need to know what that looks like. And so, the idea is, and if you think about it from a staff perspective, they're gonna work on all of those other things, but at the end of the year, they're gonna look at and say, man, I got these things, like, accomplished, they're in the box. And we look at and go, yeah, they're in the box. Is that helpful? We're still gonna do, we're still gonna work on the things that you're concerned about in the downtown, but I'm not sure that they would be completed by the end of the year. Go ahead.
So, regarding the Bellhaven Branch Library Project, if, on the project on a page, I would propose that we continue with all speed on the Priority One, new, new Bellhaven Branch Library, but that we actually take off Priority Two, overall library system improvements. So, we really focus every bit of energy on the Bellhaven Library.
Does it, so, the question would be, does it affect staff? So, when you're doing that, is it gonna somehow affect, when you do that, do you free up staff from one project to the next? Is it different? Because part of this is staff department prioritization, right? So, if we say, okay, if we free up staff from doing anything on all library improvements, is that gonna improve, improve the focus on just getting the Bellhaven done this year? Or can they, do they feel comfortable they will get Bellhaven done this year, but they still have capacity for the rest? Go ahead.
I mean, well, I'll, I'll let Sean speak.
Sean Reinhardt, interim library director. The answer to your question, Mayor, is no, we can accommodate both of these items within current staffing levels.
I mean, part of my, what I think we, we heard from staff was that they thought there were certain economy of scales with, because I, I share your skepticism, obviously, but they thought that there was a benefit to the Bellhaven project by proceeding with this analysis of larger system improvement and the Bellhaven, the Bellhaven Branch Library improvement. And so, it, it seems like a plausible and logical conclusion, and so, that's why I supported it at the time.
I, I totally support staff that they can do both, and that they're gonna prioritize Bellhaven first. The guys look, last year, what happened with the libraries, like, fingers on council, all right? We told staff what policy to implement, they pursued that policy to the fullest extent. Staff's telling us they're gonna prioritize the Bellhaven Branch Library. I fully expect they're gonna prioritize the Bellhaven Branch Library, but then also, while they're doing it, think about system improvements to the whole system. It's a cohesive project.
So, just to, to follow along with, with you, Councilmember Nash, is that you're concerned about staff time going into area, working on things that maybe other things can be done? That's my understanding. I could be wrong.
Yes, I guess my twofold. I really think, I want to see every bit of effort that we can possibly put toward the Bellhaven Library and speeding up as Mayor Protem... Taylor, thank you, said earlier, where there was, she was skeptical of the 2025. I totally agree. How can we put every possible resource on Bellhaven? And also, given that there's also resources from Public Works, I really see Bellhaven Library as the priority. But I'm one of five.
If I could just weigh in, Councilmember Nash, I think we all are in agreement on that, on the staff upside as well. Just quickly about the 2025 figure, that was very much a rough estimate timeline just for discussion purposes in a previous council meeting. Council will be reviewing the Bellhaven Space Need Study results in an information item next week on March 12th, and in a regular business item on March 26th. And at that time, council can give staff some direction as far as next steps in the Bellhaven portion of the project, which would continue to be Priority One, and we can achieve some more clarity as to what an actual timeline will be as a result of the additional work that is to come. Certainly, we've heard the message loud and clear that expediting that project to the greatest extent possible... greatest extent possible is council's clear priority and staff will definitely respond to that, follow up with that. However, we do have the capacity to also still include other needs and other activities as outlined here without in any way slowing down the Bellhaven Branch Library project.
But could you speed it up?
Well, as far as like the construction timeline, I think that does still depend upon some additional work that needs to be done as far as the preliminary design, identifying a site, identifying some funding options, some other details that just, we do not have that information yet. And that will really inform us as to really what is realistic as far as how much we can expedite it because we, we just need that information before we can answer that question with certainty.
And I would add, I think at the end of the day, how quickly it can be delivered is going to be dependent on how much you want to pay. It's going to, we're probably going to have to go out to bond. That's the realistic thing. I mean, either we're going to find a funding mechanism or we're going to have to go out to bond, so. But anyway, that is, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton? Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'm going to, ah, put the phone in my ear, I want to speak. Um, yes, I agree with Mayor Mueller, but if staff says that they have the capacity to do both, I think staff understand without any doubt where the priority lies, but where there is excess capacity and their ability to, to deal with things, I trust that they have the ability to be professionals and keep their eye on, on the primary objective while still dealing with any opportunities for the, the other library at the same time.
So do we have any amendments, any other discussion about amendments to the top five or are we set? Okay, so the only other comment I'd make on the top five is just, and I know I drive you guys crazy, but, so I'm not going to amend one of them, but I'm going to say really very much interested in the connection of the bicycle tunnel all the way to the end of Olive. Middle is just lot, the, the speed on Middle, Middle is, especially with Stanford coming online in that corridor for it to be actually a safe bicycle route to that tunnel. Not going to expand it now, it's not in the top five, but just really looking, just wanted to take the opportunity again to plug, Middle to Olive is really going to be an important connection point for safety to actually utilize that tunnel. So, but not changing the top five on you and not creating a wobbler on you. So are we ready to vote on the top five? Yep, Councilmember Combs?
I move approval.
You have a second? Councilmember Carlton, do you want to make the second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, we can go ahead and vote. Okay, all right. Our next item is, what's the last piece here, Nikki? Just wants to confirm that these other items are being added to the general work plan?
Yes.
Councilmember Combs? Okay, anyone have any other comments? So I'm not, the teacher housing on Flood Site is something that's coming forward from the Ravenswood School District. I don't know what the status of that be, will be now that they're without superintendent, so I don't know if that project's going into limbo or what's happened to it. There was clear expressed intent by the district before they found themselves in there and now, in the situation they're in now, so I just don't know what the status of that be. That might be something that just sort of sits for a while or we could just take it off and bring it back. I don't know what to do with that.
So I'd actually like to chime in and, and I would be leaning towards taking that off. And again, I have, even separate from, I know that the, the current issues that the Ravenswood School District is, is experiencing with regards to leadership issues, I just have some concerns about whether there has been enough outreach at this point to that community. I know that it's, it's identified as that as part of this process, but I am concerned that we have it as a priority when I feel that there hasn't been enough community outreach as into getting some sense of, of, in that particular neighborhood outreach as getting some sense of, of what their thoughts are on this. And, and again, I think we can all can appreciate that the Ravenswood School District has, has been in, you know, challenging situations, but they haven't been the best steward of that property. And, and so again, like I said, I, I think that we need to approach anything regarding that with, with some caution and making sure we're, we're definitely connecting with, with the neighbors and getting some sense of, of what they think about, about this process.
So this brings us to the chicken and egg because, so that's, when something's in the work plan, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to happen. It means that what we're saying to staff is, we're going to explore this. So, and sometimes it's like we're going to explore this with intent and sometimes it's that we're just going to do outreach on this, right? And so it's a different level. The difficulty that will come later will be that if Ravenswood approaches us with this and wants to do it, if it's not in the work plan, then we'll have to bring it and say, can we put it in the work plan? I don't have a problem, because of the way Ravenswood is now, I don't have any problem pulling it out of the work plan because I don't think there's a project right now. But, and we'll work, I'll work, I'm happy to work through with you and staff when it gets officially added to the work plan and how we do that and what outreach we do around that, that's fine. So, but you're, it's going to be, just so you guys know, I'm not saying it's just specific to this, it's chicken and egg in terms of when we put something on. Like, if it's not on, then it's hard to ask staff to do anything on it because it's like, let's not, there's been no vote of the council even put in the work plan yet, so. Any, any other items pull out?
I have one other comment and that's on develop and implement near-term downtown parking strategies. I would like to see that, to say parking and access strategies so that we're not just talking about parking.
Everyone, everyone good with that? Yep. Kat, you good with that?
I repeat, please.
Betsy wants to add, develop and implement near-term downtown parking and access strategies. So the term, so the two words, end access before strategies?
Okay, I'm, I'm not really against it, I'm just trying to understand why.
The reason is...
That's fine, we can work out the, the details later, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other amendments to this, to this? No? Anything anyone wants to take off besides teacher housing on Flood Site? Nope? All right.
Can we not, can we not take that off because we don't, we don't know for sure what's going to happen with it?
So the...
And I worry that if we take it off...
Councilmember Carlton, so I, in, I actually really care about...
I have conversations...
Excuse me?
I heard the conversation, but I thought we were just going to backburner it and, and leave it on the list until we find out what happened, what's going to happen.
So the person who asked me to put it on the list was Gloria and she's not there anymore. So that's why I'm fine with taking it off the list. But if they come forward and so, but if they want, if they, I mean, Councilmember Carlton, if they come forward and they really want to have this discussion with us, then I'm very interested in the discussion and I think we can both work with Councilmember Combs how we message that to the neighborhood and have a, have a discussion about that here in the, here in the, with, with outreach to them. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I understand. My question is, if, we, we don't know what, what's happening with it and if they come back and we hear, actually, everyone involved thinks this is fantastic, it wasn't just one person, how easily does it make it way back onto the work plan if it is, if it does have a lot of support?
If it, so if it, so they, I can't imagine that they can do it with an interim city, with an interim superintendent. So what happened will be, but if they do, if they come back to us and say they definitely still want it in the work plan, what we can do is we can go ahead and put it as an item before council to be added as an amendment to the work plan. And then we'll have a staff report and give notice to the, we'll have a staff report, have it in the agenda and I can work with Councilmember Combs to give notice to the suburban park neighborhood. Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as we can put it back on. I, it's, it's, you know, six and one, half dozen the other, whether we leave it on and ignore it until further notice or we put it on later, but I understand you're trying to keep it clean.
Yeah, I mean, that's all it is. It's just, it's just, it's just so that staff, right now, there's nothing for staff, there's nothing necessarily for staff to work on, it seems, so why, there's no, no need for a placeholder in the work plan until we know. I, I do want, however, like, fair notice, like, it is a huge issue and it is an unused site, so I very, I am very interested in, in that site for teacher housing, especially because I don't, I'm fairly certain it can't be turned back into a school site. And frankly, candidly, there have been, my understanding is that there have been developers who've approached the school, who, the school could sell it to anyone, and there have been developers who wanted to use it for commercial, which would be a much more intrusive use and we wouldn't necessarily have much say over that, so. So anyway, I think there's, there's a strong argument to be made to the community that a residential use for teachers is actually in the, in the, to the benefit of the community there and prepared to have that policy discussion, but I just think with Gloria not being there now, there's no need to have it this, this immediate. So, any other, are you, are you okay, Kat?
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be happier, but I'll live with it.
Appreciate it. Indifference to Councilmember Combs. Are we all set, folks? Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Last motion of the night. I need someone to make it.
All right, so moved.
All right, Kat moves, Drew, Drew seconds, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I am going to now excuse my, so that was the last thing on the council goal setting, right? So we are now moving now to informational items, pension liability and funding options. Does anyone want to hear the staff report or are we good with the information contained in the packet? Think we're good with the information contained in the packet?
I think we're good.
Okay, moving on. Anyone have any questions for staff? Nope, moving on to city manager's report. Any report?
No report tonight.
Any councilmember reports? Meeting is adjourned.